Recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in our nation under God, indivisible, with the greatest of your justice for all.
Good evening, Board members, and Happy New Year. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of the November 30th, 2022 Board Work Session and the December 14th, 2022 Board of Education Meeting are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Any additions, corrections, discussions? I do want to thank the administrators for answering those questions. These were questions that were submitted after the work session. So, thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Do we have? Nope. Okay. So, we will now transition to Superintendent Soler with his comments.
Good evening, Board members. Happy New Year. Welcome back. Lot going on. And just a couple of days back from break, we had a lot go on before break. But I am going to try to keep my remarks brief because I'd like to focus tonight, majority of the time, on a couple of the presentations that we have scheduled. So first, I hope everyone had a good time during, whether their holiday, whether they celebrate Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Merry Christmas to those who celebrate Christmas, and obviously Happy New Year for all of us as we come back into 2023. If you hadn't get a chance, there was a ton of pictures and videos on our website, on our social media, of various celebrations from various of our schools, recognizing the various cultures. We had a great event at Van Corleere. Kudos to the staff and students there. They had decorated various hallways to recognize various cultures. So, it was fantastic. January, though, is School Board Recognition Month, National School Boards Recognition Month. And so, although we recognize the board for a week in New York in October, I do want to take another moment again to extend a huge thank you to the board members for their selfless time and energy to this work, to the district, to the students, to the families, and the community that we all serve. It's always a good reminder for me, whenever this happens, that everyone here is a volunteer. No one gets compensated for their time, but you all have chosen to put yourself in this elected position for the betterment of our district and kids. So, again, congratulations on being recognized in January's National School Boards Recognition Month. I'm also proud to share that prior to the holiday break or the winter break, we had a community schools ribbon cutting, which was fantastic. I want to thank Board President Bernice Rivera, who was there. Board Member Kathy Lewis was also in attendance. We also had the event take place at Martin Luther King Elementary School. It was a great event, well-attended by not only staff, students, and parents, but also by some community partners. And we also had our mayor provide some remarks, just to show the synergy between the city, the office, the city, the mayor's office, and the district when it comes to the improvement of our schools and our communities. We've been working on this initiative, obviously, since last year. We announced it. But in addition to Martin Luther King Elementary School, we also have Kane, Hamilton, Page, and Van Corleere that are also going to be rolling out the community schools initiative. They've already started that work, and so that will continue to take place. I want to thank Dr. Carlos Coto, Ms. Simone Miranda, the community school coordinators, the principals of these schools, because this is not possible without great principals in those buildings, their staff, and the community partners who have all been involved in collaborating with us in this work. The intent ultimately of our community schools is to provide resources and a hub for our families and community. So, the hope is that these schools will strengthen the communities that they sit in, but also become a resource for them. I always tell people, there's one place every family can find, and that's the schoolhouse. And so, how do we make our schools those beacons of hope for our families? I'm also excited to announce, I've charged our deputy superintendent with assisting me with this task, we'll be launching a Superintendent Student Advisory Council this year in 2023. We've already started to communicate that to the building principals, to get us students to apply, to be a part of it. We're going to be focusing on grades five through 12. We were going to meet monthly. The purpose of the committee, obviously, is to ultimately raise student voice and provide input that will inform future decisions. And I like to kind of run topics through them, see what their feedback is. Also, here just from them, I'm pretty sure school lunch is going to be a popular subject. And so, you know, we look forward to what suggestions they have. There is a flyer on our website. It'll be on social media. It'll be emailed to parents in case parents want to nominate their own child to be a part of this. We will have applications be submitted. It's just a small little essay, just basically asking, why do you want to be a part of this? So, we can hear what excites them or why they want to be a part of it. I'm also going to be working, I think, for some students, writing may not be a strong suit, we're going to look at maybe having a video or some kind of auditory application process for them as well. Again, trying to be as inclusive as possible for all of our students. But I'm excited to get this council going, to directly hear from our students. And again, this will be an avenue that I will do monthly and look to change kids out every year as part of our work. This will also lend to getting student representatives for the board. I know that was something the board tasked me on early with. So, my hope is that we will end up having two students become a student rep and a backup student rep for our board meetings, so that they could sit here at board nights and get to engage and provide feedback to the Board of Education. We are currently holding meetings this week for our rising ninth graders. That's our current eighth graders. The first one was held at Mount Pleasant last night. We had a great turnout, some great questions, some great feedback. Tonight, there's a session currently going on at Onida. It should be done within the next 15 or 20 minutes or so. And then, there's another one happening tomorrow night at Central Park. So, if you have a rising eighth grader, or if you know a family member that does have a rising eighth grader, this is an opportunity for them to learn about the pathways, the secondary programming that we continue to redesign. We want to share with them, so they can make an informed decision around choices for next year. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be recognizing Hamilton Elementary School for winning their float in the Schenectady Holiday Parade. So, we thought that was cool, and that'll be happening at the next Chamber's January meeting. I don't have the specific date, but I just wanted to put that out for the board. Final two reminders, or final two events and reminders, because we don't meet again until later this month for a work session, we will be off to recognize the birthday of Martin Luther King on January 16. And we will also be holding a district-wide spelling bee January 26 at 9:30 in the morning at Mount Pleasant Auditorium, if any board members want to stop in and check that out. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Soler. And our comments, our board comments, will begin with VP Nohalani.
Good evening. So, my comments will be very brief, very quick. I did want to welcome everybody back. In my opinion, very short, too short. But it's good to be back. And I did have the pleasure, while I was on break, to attend Howe Elementary School's holiday concert, winter concert. And Board President Bernice was with me. We were there together. And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the students and the families. I can't describe how packed the building was. It was standing room only. It was very hot. But it was so nice because the kids were so happy to see so many people come out and support them. It was beautiful. It was a really, really well-attended event. And then, I had the pleasure of actually taking a tour of Howe. I'd never actually been in the building. So, it was really interesting to be able to go through and to see all of the architecture, the library, all of the great stuff that's going on in that building. Principal Sitz was more than welcoming. It was really, really nice. And I enjoyed myself thoroughly. So, I'm hoping to get to go back in the spring at some point. But those conclude my comments.
Thank you. And I agree. I'll just say that. I agree. It was a great time at Howe. Thank you for your hospitality. It was very, very nice. And also to your assistant principal as well. Thank you so much. Thank you. And is it Jets, her last name?
Jets.
Okay.
Mispronounced. My apologies.
Thank you. Thank you. But I also want to, on December 19, I want to thank MLK for inviting me to participate in their door decorating contest. That was a lot of fun. And I walked around with Assistant Principal Bates, and we were looking and using a rubric to assess the doors. So, we had a lot of fun with that. So, thank you so much. I really enjoyed it. And the same, I agree with the ribbon cutting. It was great to see our community members support our initiative and to be really involved and excited about how we're moving forward in Schenectady. I did want to mention a few things in terms of the NISBA newsletter that we all received, and we received one on December 19. And then, just a few things, just to keep, you know, in the back of your minds. And I know, Jamaica, you actually had sent something before about the mascots, and then we sent something during one of the email exchanges in terms of, like, updates. So, just so everyone is aware, school districts with Indigenous mascots would have until June 2023 to eliminate them under a proposed state regulation. The regulation would prohibit the use of Indigenous names, mascots, or logos by public schools, but would not affect the names of school buildings or school districts named after an Indigenous tribe. If adopted in April, the proposed amendment will become effective as a permanent rule on May 3, 2023. And there's additional information on that December 19 newsletter, but I think it's really important for us to take a look at it. Then, the other thing I thought was really interesting also, in the same December 19 published article, is the Regents call for a $3.5 billion school aid increase. The Regents are responsible for the general, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with Regents, but they're like the school board for the state. So, the Regents are responsible for the general supervision of all educational activities within the state, presiding over the University and New York State Education Department. This request by the Board of Regents is mostly driven by a $2.7 billion price tag to fund the third and final year of the Foundation Aid Phase-In Plan. So, it's really important. Take a look at that. December 19 is the onboard article. And both of them are on the first page, I believe. Okay. And then, that concludes my comments, and we're going to turn it over to Vivian.
Just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Welcome back, and that was it.
I had the opportunity to...
Your microphone, Kathy.
Yep.
Somebody turned it around.
Good evening, everybody. I had the opportunity to attend Onida's middle school performance of Matilda Jr. on December 21. The events I had planned to attend on the 15th and 16th were postponed because of that snow that we had. So, this one was rescheduled to Wednesday, the 21st. And so, I thank Alexandria Marshall, who directed that performance, and it was co-directed by Danielle Dodway and Jacob Shank. And the performance was fun and outstanding. Some outstanding voices. I wanted to identify, I didn't know what grades all of them were in, but I wanted to alert the high school that they have some real possibilities coming along in that group. So, that was fun. I was unable to go on Thursday, the 22nd, to Zaller's K2 Winter Concert. It also had been postponed. But I had gone to the school on the 16th, not knowing that everything had been postponed. And so, I was able to tour. That's one of my liaison schools. So, I was able to tour that school and find that they're kind of expanding at, I mean, they could use a little more space. And maybe we're going to hear more about that. But that was one of the points I picked up in my tour of that school. I would encourage people to go, having just heard about that spelling bee. That's really fun. I like to sit there and try to spell all the words myself when they're being asked it. And hopefully, I can make it. But I know I'm supposed to be out of town, too. So, the ribbon cutting was excellent. And as everyone has pointed out, it drew a lot of attention from the community and so on. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Kathy.
Oh, is it me?
Yeah. Happy New Year. That's it. Thank you, Jamaica.
I also like to say Happy New Year to everybody and start out this new year fresh. Hopefully, everybody who's had issues or problems trying to get to school, please come. There's so many fun, exciting things to do. So, for all students and parents listening, give us a call if there's any issues. And again, Happy New Years.
Thank you, Priscilla.
I guess I have to say Happy New Year. So, I'm not the only one who does. But that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Erica. Thank you all. So, now, we're going to transition to Teacher of the Year presentation. We are very excited to do this presentation. So, on December 14, Marissa Ray, who has been seventh, who has been a seventh and eighth grade English as a new language teacher at Central Park Middle School for seven years, was named our 2023 Teacher of the Year.
Marissa, I can't see you. I got the TV in front of me. Want to come down? Thanks. We've got a little bit more to read about you.
Oh, yeah.
No pressure.
Okay. So, Marissa, we're going to say that again. On December 14, Marissa Ray, who has been a seventh and eighth grade English as a new language teacher at Central Park Middle School for seven years, was named our 2023 Teacher of the Year. Several letters were written in support of her nomination. Marissa is committed to making connections with students and their families and ensuring that every student has what is needed to be successful. Her students feel appreciated, supported, loved, and able. Ms. Ray makes learning fun, devotes free time to raising money, assists for food and clothing, and ensures that her students can get to and from appointments and sporting events. When all students were learning from home due to COVID pandemic, due to the COVID pandemic, Marissa made visits to her students' homes and sat outside on their porches with her whiteboard to provide lessons and to offer support. Marissa also participates in many extracurricular activities, including the anti-racist building leadership team, after-school tutoring, bulletin boards, cultural night, diversity resource group, homework club, lunch basketball program, positive behavioral interventions and supports, student council, sunshine committee, and the 21st Century Program. We are very fortunate to have Marissa as a member of our team. As Schenectady City School District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ray is now eligible to enter the New York State Teacher of the Year contest. Please join us in congratulating Marissa.
So, Marissa, to formally acknowledge your receipt of Schenectady Teacher of the Year, we have this plaque in recognition of outstanding contributions to the academic achievement and personal growth of the children of Schenectady School District. So, this is for you.
Thank you.
We've got to do a photo here with you. We also will be reinstituting the plaque that we have. And I've given Carmella the charge to get our plaque updated with your name. So, that'll be posted. It will catch up with COVID. So, we'll be having your plaque in the district office of Teacher of the Year winners. And so, on that, we would like to give you an opportunity to say some remarks.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Soler, and everyone in the audience tonight. Happy New Year. I hope 2023 has started off great for everyone. Again, as everybody knows, I'm Marissa Ray, and I'm beyond excited and honored to be named Schenectady City School District's Teacher of the Year for 2023. I'm going to keep this as brief as possible, because if you ask any of my students, they will be the first to tell you how long-winded I can be. I'll start by thanking you all again for honoring me here tonight. It is with great pleasure that I represent the ENL Department, Central Park Middle School, our district, and our community. I'm proud to be able to continue to shed light on the truly amazing things our ENL Department is doing every single day. I will continue to celebrate and recognize all of our students and their families and the wonderful things that they bring to our community. So, I have a very long list of people that I want to thank. So, again, like I promised, I'll make it quick. I'd like to start out by thanking all the students and their families. Forever grateful for the connections that we've built over the years, and I'm very lucky to be a part of all of your educational experiences here in Schenectady. A very special thank you to Kelly Killian, attendance paraprofessional at Central Park, for nominating me and supporting me every single day. Without you, I would not be in the position that I am today. To my colleagues at Central Park, both former and current, I really don't know what I would do without any of you, and I appreciate your guidance and support. Thank you for making even the toughest days enjoyable. To the ENL Department, thank you for being mentors to me, leaders in your buildings, and advocates for our students and their families. Kathleen Wiley, one of Schenectady City School District's Teacher of the Year from one of my first years in the district, you have been a huge role model for me and continue to be someone that I turn to on a regular basis, and I can't thank you enough for your wisdom that you continue to share with me. To my parents, you have been my number-one support system. Thank you for constantly contributing to my obsession with school supplies. All of those years of taking me to the parent-teacher store and playing school with me have paid off. And just so you guys know, my classroom would not look the way it does without my parents' decorating skills. I wouldn't have the classroom at Central Park without them. I appreciate my parents for all that they've done to support me in my teaching career and teaching me to work hard no matter the challenges that I face. Last, certainly not least, thank you to my boyfriend, not my husband.
Yes, I know. I learned a hard one.
Mason Medina, as a former district employee, he understands the hard work and dedication that goes into this profession and puts up with my never-ending school rants, and I'll forever be grateful for his encouragement and support over the years. He's truly been an integral part of my success here in Schenectady and has provided me with much-needed guidance. And for that, I cannot thank him enough. So, looking back, on December 14, it was just a typical day and started out like it usually would. We were in the middle of our winter holidays around the world unit, and we were working through different stations. And all of a sudden, the door opens. I'm across from the bathroom, so sometimes it gets a little noisy. So, this year, I've had to keep my door closed more than I would like to. But all of a sudden, the door unlocks, and I see all of you. I see the balloons. I see the flowers. So, I start to understand what's going on. But of course, the kids have no clue. So, the class that you guys had come to was my beginner class and is made up of students from six different countries that speak Spanish, Arabic, and Pashto. This group is the quietest group I have ever had in all of my years, and it's not necessarily a bad thing. So, I think that this day was like a turning point in the school year. It brought us together a little bit more. I see this class twice a day. So, when I saw them later in the afternoon, that was the most that they had spoken all year. They would not stop talking about that surprise. They had said things like, "Ms. Ray, do you have pictures that you can send to my mom? And I really want to tell my family and my country." And, "Ms. Ray, make sure you put those flowers in the water, okay?" So, I also wanted to tell you guys some comments and text messages that I had received from some of my other students that I had had in previous years. One of my students, who's now a senior, and I believe he's living in Arizona at this time, he had messaged me and said, "I'm so proud. You're the best teacher every year, no matter if people don't give you flowers and the recognition. You are the best. Love you. I'm so proud. Thank you for being my teacher." The second message came from a student that's currently in ninth grade at the high school. She sent me a picture of the front of the Daily Gazette and said, "Look who it is. Congratulations. You did it. I wish I was there for the surprise. Everyone's so proud of you. I want to visit you soon one day." So, ENL students, if you're not familiar with them, they hold educators to such a high standard, and they really value their education tremendously. So, seeing all of you in my classroom that day was very meaningful and important to them. Later that day, a teacher sent me a picture of one of my students in her class, and she was watching the video on the district website on a loop, on repeat. And she told the teacher, "I'm going to watch this video forever." That day wasn't a win for Ms. Ray. It was a win for the ENL students, and it was a win for Central Park. So, moving forward, it's my hope, it's my goal to have more positivity and celebrations in our school community. In previous years, in all my time in the district, we have undergone a lot of changes at Central Park. They haven't always been easy, and they've been met with challenges. So, we have such a strong staff. We have dedicated students, dedicated families that deserve to be celebrated and recognized more often. I'll continue to be transparent in my practice and say that it is not always easy. But I just do want to acknowledge that there's still work to be done. So, with that being said, I am looking forward to entering the New York State Teacher of the Year contest, representing Schenectady with pride and diligence.
What Mrs. Ray is not saying is that her social media post, if I remember correctly, Karen, was our, it beat Mr. Green's announcement as the principal of the high school. She had the most interactions, most shares. So, it's our top social media post we've ever had in Schenectady. So, quite a following. Sorry, Mr. Green. You went down. You went down. Congratulations.
We're going to take about 15 minutes to enjoy some refreshments and cake. So, thank you again, Marissa Mae. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, those of you who want to join us outside quicker, there's refreshments and some cake to recognize our Teacher of the Year. We'll be back in about 15 minutes. If you ate dinner, I'm sorry. If you ate dinner, I'm sorry. It doesn't indicate when we would start this. That year is when we would like to see everything done from this next phase. That year also gives us time to, gives my colleagues here at SEI time to design, to meet with community, to get ground-level feedback, to get some of that stakeholder input as we look to design, but also to take this work and make sure that it's programmatically aligned to our instructional experiences and what we want to do. Also, we do a lot of things in our schools just beyond educating. We do a lot of after-school programs. We do parent, we have parent rooms, we have clothing closets. So we just want to make sure that they have enough time. So that seven years may seem like really far, but in the world of architecture and building, it goes pretty quick. And you've probably seen that with the most recent capital projects that the board has done. We're gonna talk about, a little bit about funding these projects, because at the end of the day, as the Board of Education, you have a fiscal fiduciary responsibility around making sure that we are not incurring costs to our community and our taxpayers. And then Rich and Astor and myself will take you through some of the ongoing projects that are gonna happen irregardless of the Schenectady Revitalization Plan. There are things that we've already kind of built in, but we want to let you know that they're happening, because this is really a portfolio of projects that are occurring. Some are a part of the capital project that we're gonna suggest, and some of them are gonna just be things and enhancements that we think are important to happen as we continue to rise as a school system. So when I got here in 2021, I, we coined this like mantra as a district, and we've really been gravitating around it, and that is this concept of Schenectady Rising. And, you know, everyone always says, "Well, what do you mean by that? What does that mean? What does that mean? We're floating? You know, what's going on with us?" And so, you know, the way I define it is where we reopened the schools last year, which was a big, big thing for us after being closed for more than a year and a half, to in-person learning. We're continuing to rebuild the experiences for kids academically, athletically, extracurricular programming. And we're reigniting our school district. We're reigniting the passion with our teachers and our students and our community as a whole, and just really trying to change the narrative of our school system. And so as we think about what we're, what I'm gonna be sharing tonight with the board and looking for feedback, commentary, direction from you, is this, there's this concept of revitalization. And so for me, the definition takes a quick little bit of a pivot, and we now add revitalization to Schenectady Rising. And what do we mean by revitalization? We mean imparting new, fresh energy into our facilities, not just fixing a broken window, not just updating the exterior of a building because it's 35 years old, but actually revitalizing our spaces, our instructional spaces, to be better aligned to the needs of our kids, to the vision of our school principals, and to also connect with those of our community. And so, my apologies, this is a little large on the PowerPoint here, but you have a copy in front of you. And so we're gonna share today what we view as a Schenectady Revitalization Plan 2030. And so, you know, data's important, and I wanted just to share some U.S. Census data, some trend data that's always important. And this is around Schenectady County. And, you know, not so much Schenectady, it's hard to get it because our, we're not like a really large city, so I do have some city data that I would want to share. But according to Schenectady County, the house, the number of housing units have grown in this county since the last census, really in the last 10 years, okay? And, you know, there's always this conversation around population increase, and, you know, should we invest in facilities? Do we have families leaving us? You know, things of that nature. And so I just wanted to point out, there's a couple of data points around housing units. The vacancy rate has also improved, which means there's less houses that are vacant in our city. There is a good numbers, I think it's like 8.2%, but it's decreased over the time, and, you know, total population has also increased. Also, when you get more granular, and you look at the city of Schenectady, we're about 70, 67,000 residents. And so, you know, that's been pretty flat or pretty consistent since like the GE kind of, you know, downgrade and, and their presence here. It used to be over 100,000 at one point in Schenectady, but this has been the number pretty consistent from the last time in terms of, it has grown a little bit, but not significantly that you would be of concern. When we look at our district, you know, it's important to also look at some data around our school system. We've got about, currently enrolled in our school system, we have about 9,139 students. That does not include out-of-district placement. There's still our kids that go to maybe some of our preschool. That does not include out of district placement. There's still our kids that go to maybe some of our preschool providers. That does not include Schenectady residents that go to charter schools that we are responsible for them. If we were to include all those, we're closer to 10,000. But, and I say that because part of the vision that I have and that we have as a team is that if we do this work well, not only academically program, some of the things that we're doing with the redesign, some of the things that we're doing instructionally, some of the things we did with our collective bargaining agreements, trying to make sure that our teachers are compensated at a competitive region, a rate within the region. That's how we draw people back into our school system so that they don't choose the charter. They, they say, wow, they have great facilities. They, the, the city's clean. They look well maintained. So I say that because there's six or seven hundred families that we are not servicing that live in Schenectady. And about two hundred and forty or so, Dr. Mason can quote me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, are homeschooled. So that means they don't go anywhere. They've chosen homeschool. And so there's an opportunity for us to regain that. Our 18 school buildings and campuses are 11 elementary schools, three middle schools. We have one alternative school, one adult education center, one high school, and we have one vacant elementary school that we sometimes forget about in, in, in the, in the name of Fulton. It's not on this map because it's not in use, but it was used as a swing space historically for, I believe it was Hamilton at the time. We are responsible for almost 2 million square feet of facilities. Now you think about that in comparison to the other organizations in our city, and that's a lot of square footage. And so, you know, we brought on a new chief facilities director with Brian Dangler. We're going to, tonight the board's going to consider two individuals that'll join that team that will help us maintain. We have an amazing facilities and grounds crew, but that's a lot of square feet. And so again, there's a lot of information in just the numbers. And so I was blown away by this when I got here, that the average age of our school buildings is 95 years old. That, that's, in, in some cases, some of our buildings look it, right? And I don't mean that as a bad thing, but we've got to be honest about it. We've got some school buildings that have been forgotten about for whatever reason. I'm not, I'm not talking about the past. We're talking about moving forward. And so we want to make an intentional step around the work that we do. But I do want to point out that Howe is our oldest school. And I heard some board members tonight say they went to visit it. You can see it in the architecture. The front kind of entryway is, you know, 1905. They got these gargoyles just set up there. Pretty cool, but like, you know, maybe some of our kids are scared of those gargoyles. I don't know. Maybe it helps Mr. Sitz in cafeteria. I don't know. Get him to pay attention. But, you know, the, the reality is our newest building in the district is Woodlawn, and that was in 1972. And so people don't realize that. Now we've done some things as a district. We've done some additions. We've done some rehabilitation. But we really haven't done a true revitalization of an entire campus. And so that's the, the, the vision that I have with this Schenectady Revitalization Plan. We shared this with the BCS, Rich shared this and Alistair and the folks at SEI, and I thought it was important to come back to it. This was, you know, this is where we are. We're right here at the very 2023, that little first dot at the, at the end there where it says plan. That's today. This is me here in front of you right now. If the board gives us the blessing to proceed, then we're going to start that work and planning with the target of moving to that May 16th date where we will ask the community to make a vote on this capital revitalization plan. Then we got some work to do. We got a lot of work to do. We've got to design. We've got to meet with folks. We've got to look at building documents. We've got to think about utilization. But again, the ultimate goal is that by 2030, we are occupied in these buildings and they are completely transformed spaces for learning. Again, the historic work. This is what was done before. Some of you were board members, so some of you are aware of this. Some of you are not. So I wanted to share this with you because, again, this isn't about looking back and saying anything was done negatively in the past. It was just done differently in the past. And so what you notice is we would go out in the past for these small approvals. 70 million. Then we'd come back and say, we need another 64.5 million. Then we would come back. But if you look at it, that was a total of about 135 million, right? I'm asking the board permission to be a little bit more bold and to really look at that last column and to think about those campuses. And you saw the earlier dates. You have the slides in front of you. You can look at it. And to really prioritize some of the campuses that I think are gems that have just been kind of overlooked. And some of this came up in the BCS data that we saw when our folks presented in July. There's some big price tags on some of these. So I know it's a little like, whoa, where am I going to get this from? Remember, this is over a seven-year window, but a five-year window in terms of borrowing and maximum cost allowance, which Terry will share a little bit about how that works with the board. Everything that we've put there in terms of a dollar amount addresses everything that was identified by our partners at SEI, but also allows us to elevate the programming and the student experience on those campuses. Some of them will be a little bit more challenging. Like I get multiple emails and let's talks about parking at Howe. I'm not really sure because we just don't know, we don't own any more land there. But, you know, we've got to figure out something, right? Because I know the challenges from both the community standpoint, but also our staff. And so we're going to have to look at that. But again, remember that school has not been touched truly other than some renovations that was done back in, I believe, 2017 was the, or 2015, I think, was the Howe when they redid the wing over there as the first phase one, which some of you got to see. So my request for the board is this is the vision. I'm going to go a little bit deeper so you can kind of still understand how we got here. We also know there's going to be things that we need to do in our buildings that were identified in the building condition survey, which is why you see this district-wide BCS priorities and improvements. Because we know that we have a responsibility for other campuses that also need to be touched, some not as urgent as other campuses. We've done, you've done great work at Hamilton. There's phenomenal stuff there, but there's still a little bit more that needs to be done. And so that, some of those dollars would associate that. I wanted to show you kind of a high level vision of a, of a, of a timeline, just so you can see how this works. And Rich and Alistair, you can jump in here and correct me if I mess up anything. We did rehearse this. But the goal here, and this is new news, somewhat new because we've been sharing with our eight-go-nine kids, but this is the first time the board's going to officially hear it, is to take the Stuyments campus and, and phase out the current program and look to revitalize that entire building and reopen it as a new freshman leadership academy in the fall of 2025. Brand new, make the upgrades that are necessary. It'll be a brand new school before anybody moves in. Because right now, we can't do anything at the high school with a full building. And so we're going to need to create swing space anyway. Why not, excuse, excuse me. Why not create swing space that also aligns to some of the programmatic redesign conversations that we've been happening? And so give those kids as freshmen a brand new campus that they can walk into. Give those teachers brand new classrooms they can walk through with, you know, updated interactive boards, with a larger cafeteria, with better parking. And so those are the things that would come out. When that would start, you can kind of see there's Fulton a little bit at the bottom there. Sorry. Fulton at the bottom there. And that means that's also an empty building that we would swing a school into, an elementary school like Van Corleere, so that we can work on Van Corleere. And if you see those little dotted bubbles, that would kind of see the progression here. One thing that's important to point out, and I'm not wanting to overlook it even though it's small on the chart, is that we're also, we're intentionally focused on a middle school. And she's an amazing principal. She's an advocate for her building. She's got teacher of the year over there. But Principal McAvoy-Bush tells us all the time, they need some work over there at Central Park, right? Noalani's got a daughter there, right? And so we've included Central Park as part of this initial revitalization. The one that's important for me to bring up is Kane. And, and I'm going to ask you this question a little bit later on, and then we can have some dialogue. But I will need direction from the board on Kane. We do not currently own the building that it's in. We've leased it for probably over a decade. And it, every year is about $250,000 that we spend to lease that building, but we don't own that building. And so we're going to need to make a decision, or I'm going to need a direction from the board that either says pursue it, continue to renew the lease on it as it goes to the programmatic offerings. Because if we don't have Kane as a campus, then we may have to make Fulton the permanent home for a school. Doesn't have to be Kane. I'm just, I want to point that out as an example, okay? And that's important information. That's new, but we're getting at the mid-year mark and leases take a little bit of time for me to work on and negotiate and bring back to the board for approval. Or so do purchases. And we would have to talk to the Catholic diocese to see if they'd be entertaining enough to allow us to purchase the campus. We've had some preliminary conversations with them and they are willing to have that, that dialogue. It's just more around the cost. And so the board has to be prepared for that as well. Then you'll see the addition of other schools. Now this isn't perfect. I don't want to hold me to it. This is a draft tentative timeline. But we would then move into Howe and then into Page at the same time as working into some of these other schools. If we don't get the permission of the board to purchase or continue to lease Kane, then we have to talk about consolidating an elementary school potentially. And right now we have two schools that are literally a block apart, which is Lincoln and Kane. And so both of them deserve, have great principles, doing great work. It's not anything that they're doing wrong. We just have to think about the larger plan. And then that last kind of ribbon is the district-wide kind of priorities. But this would get us a school in every part of our region as a city. It would also have some conversations around programming. And one of the real important ones is that it finally starts to do some serious work at the high school that's been long, long overdue. And so if we were just to take the building condition survey and the total of what was identified by our partners at SEI, you're talking about a $350 million price tag. And that's just maintenance and upkeep. And so what we're proposing is choosing a handful of schools, really looking to move beyond just maintenance and upkeep. But I thought it was important for you just to see the price tag of what, like fixing windows and plumbing and, you know, repainting and roofing and the things that go in the, the maintenance of a building. This other piece here, you know, we see the word security. We always sometimes not really sure how to determine that. Those are security upgrades that are recommended to us by one of our partners, Day Automation. Those are things like secure vestibules. So when someone comes into the building, they got to be buzzed in. Those are things like latches on the doors that automatically lock or that trigger a camera when somebody pushes them. We, we have them here at the high school, which is new. When somebody pushes the door, they're, they're able to tell somebody went out a door that they, they shouldn't have been using. It, it kind of lights up. So those are just some upgrades there that, that we think are also important because we get our community's most precious asset, and that's their children. And so that's just a combination. If you were to add the two of them together, it's about $328 million. So again, my question to the board tonight, one of them is Kane. Do we continue to lease it, which we've been doing for quite a while, quite a while? Or do we look to purchase it so that we can address things that are listed in the bullets on the right and really give that community and campus, it's in a really important part of our city where it sits now? And so that's something I'm going to need some feedback tonight from the board on. And we can do that at the end. I just wanted to, again, re pose that question to you. But that building alone, just on the BCS, needs about 10 million, 10.6 million in building condition type upgrades. So if we were to purchase it, we would have to invest in it. And again, that conversation around, do we then create a condensed campus that addresses the needs of both Lincoln and Kane on one larger building, a larger state-of-the-art, you know, completely redone building? Or do we keep two schools separate that are literally a block or two away? Because Lincoln is also on this list with a large need. So that's my first question. Yep?
So a couple of, a couple of points looking at the, the Keene site is to understand that the building is, it was a Catholic, Catholic school diocese building. So we're currently only utilizing a portion of that building. A portion of that building doesn't meet SED standards, so we don't utilize that piece of it. The other, the other, the positive of that site is its location, but also that it has a square footage. So you've got green space. You've got opportunity there. Where some of our other sites in our evaluations and looking across the district, you're a small city school. You know, some of your campuses are the city block and you are bordered by streets or residences right up against it, and you don't have that. So there is some positives with this site to keep into consideration as we look at it.
Thank you, Rich. Next is Fulton. Currently it's vacant. It will be used as swing space. We've just now assigned a full-time custodian there to manage the building as we look to prepare. But if you think about Fulton alone, there's about 10 million in just BCS upgrades. And again, we would need to just prepare it to be swing space, but then ultimately decide what we're going to do with the building long-term. Because what we don't want to do is keep it vacant. We know there's a charter school in the, in the city. And usually vacant buildings invite more charters and more opportunity to have competition. And so, you know, we want to make sure what we do there. Lincoln, we talked about earlier. Again, these are some of the programmatic updates. It's about $14 million. And it's one of our landlocked schools. It is tight over at Lincoln. It doesn't have a secure vestibule. So there's things we got to do irregardless of what we do with construction. The, the parking is sometimes a challenge there. The, you know, the busing, dismisses arrivals. You know, just go one morning and watch and you're amazed at what they do every day to get kids into the building safely. Same thing with Kane. They're literally in pretty tough spots when it comes to the city. Schenectady High School, we're here in this auditorium. That was one of the things that was upgraded over the years. But really not much since, you know, I think the merger was about over 30 years ago, right? 92, I think, is when Schenectady High School was launched. And you, these are pictures we're not proud about, but these are pictures that we have in the building that we've had to kind of correct and address and adjust. But there's things that we have to think about. The arrival, the departure. We've made some upgrades. We've got a ton of HVAC type of issues, ventilation issues. And so the big thing with the high school is that we also know that we're trying to redesign the, the career pathway kind of experience for our kids. And so right now, some of our spaces don't really align up to that program. Central Park Middle School, we talked quickly about, about $8 million in upgrades. And again, those are just a quick bulleted list. We've got a ton of work there that needs to be done. So if we were to take the freshman leadership academy and move them to Stuyments, that's going to be a pretty large project. If we weren't going to do it, it's going to be about 25 million in just necessary maintenance upgrades on that campus. It hasn't really been touched. Nothing's really been done there. It doesn't have a cafeteria that's big enough for the number of freshmen we would have. We would look to expand. They don't have a hot kitchen over there, which we know food's a big, big thing for our kids. And so we can't give you certain things if we don't have hot kitchen. We're, we're warming things up, dropping it off over there. It's just not conducive. Secure vestibules don't exist there, which means soon as somebody comes in, they're in the building versus having kind of like a locked entrance before they get in or can be seen by a staff member. You know, we'll have to think about branding. We'll have to think about better parking if we're going to have more staff there. Right now, we have a lot of staff parking the street, which the community is not really happy about. We get various emails about, you know, some of our elderly families leave and they can't get back in front of their house because somebody's parked there. And it's a, it's a tough thing to, to challenge. So again, the big thing with Stuyments is even if we did move freshmen there, that building needs about $25 million in just work. Roofing, heating, boilers, science rooms are not what they need to be. And so we believe vacating it, spending the money, redoing it, opening it brand new as a freshman leadership academy is the right method to give our kids what they deserve. Because remember, all of our kids come from three different middle schools, and the only time they meet each other is here at the high school. So this would create a little bit of an additional transition, but one that we think is smart. Van Corleere, another building, about 14 million needed in upgrades. There's some pictures here. Again, new mechanicals, building wide, boilers need to be replaced, toilet partitions. If you've ever been into the school, the main office is actually outside of the secure vestibule. So you think about that from a safety standpoint. And then, you know, they have an elevator that doesn't even go all the way to the top. So from a design standpoint, that's problematic. You know, talk about who can get to what floor? We were not even inclusive on some of our work. Howe Elementary School, we talked about this one quite a while. They need about 5 million in just building condition surveys. But I can tell you, they need a lot more work than just that. Their cafeteria is not conducive. They really don't have a gym space and a cafeteria. They only have one space. So that means when kids are eating lunch, no one can have physical education classes. And so Principal Sitz, And so principal sits, he's a fantastic new principal there. Him and his staff and those kids deserve a really great building, especially in that part of the town and the community that hasn't had any work done, really, other than that wing that was done. And so again, we've been real intentional about where we focus these schools across our city so that we have some improvements everywhere. Page Elementary School, another school. You know, and I don't know if you noticed, there's a crawl space there that we have to like use some kind of, I don't know. I don't want to say parakeet, a bird, a canary, but they have to use a breeding apparatus because it's technically not safe to be in there because it's, you know, it's not built to standards. So we need to make some upgrades. We're gonna do that anyway, just because it's important to get it done. But they need about 22 million dollars on that campus of upgrades and maintenance and roofing and, and again, another part of the section. Wanted just to show you real quickly a test fit of what it would look like. I'm not gonna spend much time here. It's kind of in the weeds, but it does fit at Stuyments. I know we've heard questions from the number of kids. It does fit. One of the worries is we wouldn't put kids over there until we had the right science rooms, until we had the right classrooms, until we had the right cafeteria. You know, some of those things matter. And again, again, this is just another test fit screenshot showing the different sections of Stuyments, second floor, third floor. This is just a quick overview. If we were to do the high school, this is what it would look like. Those purple sections would be complete reconstructions. Okay? So if you were looking at it, at the bottom is the, bottom left is the auditorium. And if you were to walk up the hallway, you'd see this little big square right here. This is, I think that's Principal Green's office, biggest office in the district. Not sure though. But the goal would be we would hit all of the purple. And if you were to walk these rooms, we get concerns every year from staff around smell, mold, dampness, ventilation. And they're, and they're, you know, they don't show up anything negative, but you, it's a struggle. The facility is a struggle. And I think the terms I used to hear when I got here was like stomp the swamp and, you know, I guess it was on a swamp, someone said at some point. It is, okay.
And it's been in my basement.
It's in your basement too, right Kathy? Alright. So, you know, the goal would be to upgrade our athletic facilities, our main core instructional areas and these wings and these classrooms. These are all classrooms we would be focusing on, all instructional spaces. If you go in here, you can get lost in the middle. There's rooms inside a room, exactly. Correct. The other thing I'd like the board's permission on, again, as part of this 300 million work, is to pursue a facility that'll house like a district parent center for technology trainings. It would also house a better central student registration. Our registration is nothing I'm proud of. It's like two chairs in the hallway. We have great staff that work there. Dr. Mason and his team do a good job. But it's, it's tough. If you walked in our, it's like one, take a left angle, it's not really conducive to the first experience we want a parent to have in our district is this narrow hallway with a couple of chairs. It's just not good. So one of the things I would like to do, and I don't know where, is just be able to explore the opportunity to either acquire or develop a family and community engagement center that would do things like transportation for parents. When they have a transportation question, they would go to the center. When they have to register their kids, they would go to the center. If they have a superintendent hearing, they would go to the center. If there's a district-wide CSE that needs to be held, this would be the neutral place for our parents and families. And then also, we would look to keep it open on evenings so I have access to technology if parents need to do job searches, just want to use computer and technology even during the day, which is why I want a parent center that doesn't impact a school building. And also evening programming and on the weekends. So Terry, if you want to come up real quick, talk about the numbers.
Make me explain the 300 million dollars, right? Thank you. Yeah, there you go. This is just a brief introduction of how we plan on paying for this. It does need a capital project voter approval in our May 2023, 24 budget vote that's coming up in May of '23. So basically, I want you to keep in mind it has a zero tax impact. So the 300 million dollar building improvements throughout the district will have a zero tax impact. And how do we do that on 300 million dollars? New York State provides us 98% maximum cost allowance building aid for all our reconstructions and our, and improvements to our buildings. What does maximum cost allowance mean? It's basically the max amount of actual expenditures upon which the state will pay for building aid. It happens every five years per building. And then once you get to the five-year mark, it resets itself and it's based on square footage, enrollment, type of building and other factors. Currently, just to give you an example, our maximum cost allowance for here at the high school is 125 million. So we would get basically 98% aid on any improvements we make to the building as long as they are allowable expenses, which we, which we are planning on doing. How are they gonna offset the other 2% that's not covered on the 98%? We have a capital project reserve. As you know, last year, we kind of prepared knowing that we need improvements to our buildings. We added some funds to the capital project reserve fund and we have 5.5 million sitting in there. Also, what we have is an Excel aid. This is a New York State program back in 2006, I believe it was. It's not the Excel spreadsheet. That probably wasn't even existing when this came out. But basically, New York State is expanding our children's education and learning. The district hasn't utilized, fully utilized that money that's available, so we have 3.7 million of those funds available. So overall, you know, the thing to keep in mind, and we'll dig deeper into this as we present the 2324 budget and prepare for the vote and educate so people have an informed decision when they vote on this. But the main thing to remember is zero tax impact on all our taxpayers to perform these duties over the next 10 years.
And so again, I take you back to this graphic where we're in the planning phases. And tonight, I'm looking for feedback from the board on a couple of the questions that I asked you so that we can know kind of how to progress. Again, because our goal would be to prepare, educate the community, hold some forums, share some of the concepts, have some of these conversations. But ultimately, we need a supermajority vote because we're a small city, which means we need 60% voter approval to do any of this work on a capital project. And that vote is separate than our regular budget vote, but they occur at the same time. So. So again, I'm gonna stop here because you're gonna have questions on what I just shared before I move into the other pieces of some of the ongoing projects that we have occurring in the district that are separate from this capital project, that are gonna happen because we funded them in different avenues and don't require voter approval. Okay? So I'll open it up for any questions. Board member Kathy?
The purchase of, the purchase of Kane School or the property that Kane School sits on, that would not be covered in the, in this 350,000, 50 million dollars, would it?
No.
And I don't believe that's subject to aid. Is that correct?
No. But it can be if, right.
It can.
We're gonna rebuild on that campus. It'll be listed as a project.
Okay. And the last I knew, MCA, the maximum cost allowances, was done on a building-per-building basis. And so that the, so that some of the buildings might have more than the amount and others have less.
Correct.
So is, is the 98% kind of a compilation? Because I think in our last funding, we were at 96% of reimbursement.
So it's not, so like, I'm gonna show you these numbers here just because they will be helpful. Can you go back to this light, Ken, so they can see it? So this number here was intentional. Because this is the max cost allowance for these buildings. So it's 98% to each of these dollar amounts. So we've been real intentional around our thought process around this because we don't want any burden on the taxpayers. We don't want to put us in a.
No, that's, that's definitely the goal.
Right, right, exactly.
Both of those resolutions passed, I think largely because there was no tax impact.
Right. So these numbers here are exactly what you're saying. 6 million, 13 million are in alignment to our ability to maximize the cost allowance. But I think I want to be real clear. If we borrow in 2023, we get this approved, we borrow, it's five years from that point that it reloads, which would really be 2028. But we have this project going to 2030, so, because we're gonna get approval for a 10-year window. So I just want you to know what Terry was talking about is that that maximum cost allowance comes right back again. Now you can re, technically reborrow up to that maximum cost allowance again if you needed to.
I know we had problems with MCA on, on Oneida. And we may owe something back on that. I don't know if you owe the state back on something or there's, there was something on that. I'd have to
Yeah.
pull that up and.
Yeah, we went with our financial advisors. We went through every school. They did an analysis of all of our buildings. Fiscal advisors, yeah. And so we went through everywhere before we prepared this. So I would tell you that the goal is that we're not gonna have any negative debt out of this. And again, this is a plan, so this could shift, right? And so the Kane conversation is, we get aid right now on that lease agreement. So I just want to be clear. Because it's a, we have it registered with the state, it's a project, so we pay 250, but we get aid on that 250,000 that we pay to lease it. If we were to purchase it, the architect's job is to show that we have the need for it, which we do because we have the number of students. So we do need the space. And then they would submit a project saying that we would either renovate. You know, you don't get as much aid when you do brand-new. So I just want to tell, I just want to be clear. Tearing a school down and rebuilding it fresh, you don't get as much aid from the state. They frown upon that practice?
Actually, a fun fact is that if we stay within the footprint of the existing building, even though it's new construction, it's classified.
Renovation?
Exactly, yeah. Right. Penalty, yeah. So those people who may be here at home, we get full aid if we stay within the same envelope of the building versus expanding, adding brand-new. So, so I hope that helps answer your question. Any other questions?
No, go ahead. I don't know where to begin. I have a vested interest in both Kane and Central Park. Kane is amazing. Full stop. But I, I guess I'll, I'll start with, if the ninth grade academy becomes a separate building, you mentioned, you know, yes, it would be an additional transition. It, it's a flag for me because I, I like the idea that they're in this building. So they're becoming familiar with this building and the change in structure going from middle school to high school. But I'm not hearing how we're going to support our elementary going into middle school. And that was a huge problem this year personally and from what I've, I've heard from others. So how does this plan address that? So that there's the support for students going from, I'm in fifth grade, basically in the same room my entire day for the most part. And then there is a huge shift to middle school that doesn't currently have a transition plan. Yes, we should have a transition plan into high school, but how are we addressing that with the facilities as well?
Yeah, so one of the things we did this past year based on feedback from our staff is we made our sixth-grade teachers like our seventh and eighth-grade teachers so that kids had the experience of transitioning, not being self-contained. So we had tried to transition them earlier. What you're really asking for is we need to think about a summer orientation for those five-go-six kids coming into our middle school. That's really more what we need versus something to do with the facility. We are looking, and Dr. Mason's and his team is working on our kind of attendance zones right now, to see if they make sense the way they've been configured. I know that had happened quite some time ago here, where you guys kind of redistrict everybody.
2014.
Yeah, so we're looking at that to see if that still makes sense. And I know at one point, our sixth graders were not in the middle schools. They were down. At some point, you had a K to eight, you had a K to eight in this district.
We had a mixed model inside the city where some of our buildings were K through five or pre-K through five, others. We had a K through eight, which was amazing, and I'm still sad that we don't have it at Central Park anymore. And so, yes, we've had a lot of different models.
I think the, your question really speaks to like programmatically and enrollment, and enrollment-wise, how do we want to start transitioning? If that's something you want to look at. We did not look at that. What we did was we transitioned our sixth graders to be more like middle schoolers because they were coming and then they were self-contained again at the high school and it was two different schools in one building. So it made things sometimes a little bit more difficult with the facilities, the operation of the school building. But I think what we really need to think about is a five-go-six kind of summer transition program so they can get used to these new campuses and that there is a change from like, oh my God, I've been in the same building for five years, or maybe six if I went pre-K, to now go into a middle school. So I don't view that necessarily as a facilities. I view that as a different conversation around programming, enrollment, patterns. And then, you know, if we're gonna explore a grade configuration change, we want to have that conversation while we do this design planning because a K to eight looks very different in needs in terms of facility.
Right. And I'm, I'm not saying we should be exploring going through a K through eight, although, yes, it, it was great. When it, when it happened, it was our flagship school when Central Park was a K through eight. That's huge. That's a different thing. I'm just looking at, this is removing ninth grade from the high school and saying they will have their own separate building as part of a freshman academy as a transition program into high school life. That's going to be then them going to another school for 10 through 12. I'm just, yep, I'm still processing.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question.
And like if, if it's about how we support students in going into high school and it's a possible best practice for them to be in a separate space for that transition, but our middle school doesn't have that support right now. And I don't know if the summer program is enough. My child did the summer program at the middle school she went into, but still, like, it just, it's different. Like, the, the summer program is not eight classes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
And, and so just if we're looking at building and structure and how the, the physical structure offers support for their education, like, I just hope that we can also figure out, is there something else we can do for sixth graders as we're approaching this as well?
Yeah, I think, and I think, and again, this, we'd have to talk about it when we do this design work, schematic design development. But I would just think of what we've tried to do here at the high school and I'm not gonna put them on the spot. But there's a reason we wanted to focus on the freshmen per se at the high school. It is the, the ninth grade is a huge determinant in graduation. If your attendance is horrible in ninth grade, if you don't gain so many credits in ninth grade, you probably won't make it out of here in four years. And so we know our kids need more, so giving them their own space is gonna be part of that. Not to discredit with the sixth graders, what I'm thinking is if we talk about the design, I'm trying to get to Central Park here, because you mentioned it, is thinking about how we section off building, portions of the building to be their own community as maybe a sixth grade, a seventh grade. So there's less crossover, less of that transition. But at some point, we are gonna have to get them ready to get to a community where they're gonna move, you know, multiple times throughout the day. But I think if you think about it, and I think Elmer was the old model where it had like the, the roll school and then the other part was like stacked. It was like vertical. Thinking about how we maybe section off schools, portions of the school to be a sixth grade wing, a seventh grade wing, an eighth grade wing.
Which Central Park is kind of like that now. Sixth grade is all the way at the top, then seven and then eighth. I'm just gonna say, I wish it was switched and sixth graders were on the first floor.
No pressure.
And, and when I went to Central Park, it was a fifth grade wing. So elementary was only up to fourth grade.
Alright.
And at Central Park, that wing that's down by the cafeteria was the fifth grade wing. And that's where I, you know, transitioned into middle school and, and got familiar with the building. Speaking of elementary schools though, Kane and Lincoln, they are a block apart, but they, they serve some overlap versus community, but also different communities. I'm sure y'all already looked at this, number of students per building and our, our current zoning. Like, I, I worry about what it looks like to combine those two into, to one space. And the green space at Kane is absolutely wonderful and beautiful and amazing.
Right now, we don't have any access to do anything else on that facility because we just, we're tenants, we renters.
I'm fully aware.
You know, if we purchased it, we would look at, that's why we think it's an attractive potential option because of the size of the lot. We're not gonna get that other places. And, you know, nothing says they have to combine. But if we can build a larger elementary school or two smaller elementary schools on a larger plot of land, you know, I think that's something to think about. I mean, again, the age of Lincoln is one of our. I mean, again, the age of Lincoln is one of our oldest buildings.
Nineteen oh two.
And it's like the the current cafeteria is is below the building. So, you know, I'm extremely sensitive. We have two principals there. You know, I don't wanna jeopardize the two principals we have there. So whatever happens, that's gonna be that development, that committee work to figure out what that community is gonna want and need. And still to protect that space, but the attractive thing about Kane is that plot of land. It's significant. It's located in a community that needs us there. And so if we can build a larger campus that holds five hundred kids and look to combine or six hundred kids and say a principal for pre-K one, two, another principal for, you know, three, four in the same building, in the same space. You know, but give them a state-of-the-art facility to do that type of work with green space and a great parking and a great ramp entry. You know, there's a lot of things that.
And parking and um entrance and exit before and after school isn't as bad as you would think at Kane.
Right.
Yes, at least.
They've gotten better, though.
We have a process, okay, and we are very efficient and our parents are loving. Um, but the other thing that I remember from the number of transitions we've gone through in this district of whether it was the redistricting that we did of switching from this model to that model or whatever it was. Um, when there was capital projects and kids moved from building to building or house someplace else and then moved back. That transition for families, when we're doing work for the long term of, hey, we're doing this so that in the future, it's better. However, it needs to happen to, and I I know that folks care. That transition part while the work is being done is horrendous on us. And I'm saying us because I was one of those families that went through it. It is hard. And the busing, like, was when I'm looking at this and you're like, these kids are gonna be here while we're doing work here. And I'm thinking about the cost of busing to, you know, while this work's happening. All of those kids don't live in that neighborhood. You're talking about busing them to another school in another part of the the city. It's just, it's a lot, so um I send you all blessings and positive energy as you're trying to figure out how to do that with the least amount of negative impact on the families that are here now to figure out how to best serve our students in the future.
Yeah, and I think you bring a great point, which is why Fulton would be like either swing space. Or if it's not swing space, we bring it online as a new school, we'd have to do some work in it. So we were trying to be a little intentional to say if the space is vacated, let's work on it before we fill it, so we don't have people moving in and out. And then if we weren't gonna do anything like that at the high school, this is one thing I wanna make sure you understand. If we don't take kids out of the high school, the project will take forever. Because you can only work one in the summer and at night. And so, um, you know, if you've seen, you know anything about Albany's work at their high school, it's great work. But it's taken them a long time because they've they have all the kids in the building. And so, you know, it's a it's a fine juggle between moving kids and not moving kids and impacting families. But we were gonna, we had thought of using Fulton as kind of the swing space. And yes, it allows us to accelerate construction, getting everybody out of it. But you're right, there is a significant disruption. And I would tell you, we we do bust pretty much a large portion of our student population now. Um, so cost-wise, um, and that is aided at, you know, it's not, we don't really incur a lot of additional costs because of our aid rate. Um, but yes, you're right, we're gonna have to be real intentional, real clear on this.
Can you take the microphone?
When you try to do a project of the of significance in a building and we try to keep the students in the building, we actually move them more. The students have to move more times throughout the building and there's more disruptions on the education process than moving them off to a to a swing space area. So it's preferred and there's also a significant financial benefit to the fact that we can open up larger areas and work on it throughout the time so that we're not isolated to second shift or just working over the summer and trying to compress it. You look at a summer, we actually have forty-six days of construction roughly. Uh, you know, throughout a summer when you're talking about regular business hours. So we do a lot of miracles over summers and get a lot of work done. You've seen it in your district. We're gonna be talking about some projects that are gonna happen this summer here. So there's a lot that can be done, but there are significant benefits in utilizing the blessing that you have with some of these buildings that are open and you can move them.
Thank you for that. Um, final comment, we used to have three middle schools and two high schools. I'm just gonna say it out loud.
Yeah, but I also know there's some wounds there.
There's nothing wrong with Mount Pleasant as a high school, I'm just saying.
Hey, you said it, not me. Vivian?
Um, so if we were to end up purchasing Kane and then work on revitalizing that building and we're proposing combining students from two schools into one during this project. One, do we know how long this project might take in order for that to happen? Two, how would this other student's school day be impacted? Would it have to be a longer school period because of that much more students being in the same building? And is that building large enough to hold those additional students throughout the same day?
Yeah, uh, the last question first is not big enough to currently do it. Kane is um about two ninety-four. Um, Carrie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I always watch the numbers. But it's around a little bit less than three hundred. Maybe they just serviced over three hundred. Um, but they're about three hundred and I think Lincoln, if I'm, it's three, Sean? Kane, no, I'm saying Lincoln?
It's a little bit bigger.
Three thirteen, all right. So if we combine them, that's why I mentioned a larger building, there'll be about six hundred kids because we would have to create a larger facility. But we can't do any of that work at Kane at all. We're limited. We only have the one wing. I think the old part was the rectory, uh, the other part that's not usable. So we can't even technically service children in that part of the building, um, because it just doesn't meet SED code. So there would not be a need to change the length of the day. We wouldn't impact the kids instructional. The issue would be we would have a bigger plot of land to do work, so if we were gonna work on it, we could work on it. But again, if you look at the chart, we'd have to move Kane at Fulton, do the work at Kane, then bring Kane back in. Put Lincoln at Fulton, then bring Lincoln back to uh their campus. Um, so that's why Fulton is real important here because it's our empty building and it could, I think it has about fifteen or so, sixteen classrooms. And it could house both of those schools with no impact. Um, and again, it would just be swing space. So it is uncomfortable for a year, uh, but we've done it in this district, so I don't wanna make sure like you've done it. Hamilton was in one. Um, someone was at Elmer at one point as swing space. I think it was Howe was at Elmer. Um, and so, you know, Howe West, I think was the name Joe told me. Um, so, so we've done swing space before.
With um Kane, excuse me, do we get building aid if we lease it still or is only if?
Yeah, so right now we get aid on the lease agreement. Uh, we have to get SED to approve it. So the two hundred and fifty thousand that we're using, we get a portion of that back.
We did rent at one point um in Macaulay Conception up in Bellevue. Uh, that was a school and um Saint um. Adalbert over on uh uh in.
As swing space?
Mount Pleasant, and that those were two schools.
Oh, okay. Is that Blodgett? Is that, is that where Blodgett was?
Yeah, Blodgett was up, Blodgett was up in Bellevue.
Okay.
And and then um the other one was at uh there, FDR. And yeah, and we could, you know, that space was available to us at at that point.
Yeah, we did not explore that for this, but.
But, uh, and what I wondered is, have we looked at, behind Kane, there's was Parsons. I don't know if Parsons is still there or not. Is it?
Are you talking about the um the UPK?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they still, that that building's open. It's a SCAP program.
Yeah, no, I know it is, but it's not, I mean, I know it's.
It's pre-K.
It's a school, but it's a school.
Yeah, yeah, it's pre-K.
I wasn't sure if it was still operating. I haven't.
They're one of our providers, right?
It's a, yeah, it's a three-year-old pre-K.
Yeah, pre-K, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, Erica, you done? Okay.
So I just had a really quick question. I'm thinking um just the cost effectiveness, right, for Kane and and how that works. So I think you had mentioned that if we build and we expand, we get penalized. So how, do you know?
So we probably wouldn't build and expand, but we'd be able to renovate what's already there and use all of the building versus, because remember, as long as we stay in the envelope, those rooms that we can't use now, we could renovate to use them.
There's building space that we would make usable that we currently can't use, so we'd still get funding back for that space. Because it physically is already there. We don't have to make a new building. We just have to fix the building that's already there.
Okay, so it would be more cost-effective than to.
And and he just wants to correct, you don't get punished, you just get less aid, so.
Okay.
You get less aid. Penalty, yeah, yeah, yeah. Punish is the wrong word.
Okay, so then, in essence, if we get access to that space, then our Lincoln students technically would be able to come there. Would it be?
Yeah, so no, we would, we would have to go bigger than what we are, yeah. We would have to add an extension, add another wing.
Okay, that's what I.
Build vertically, depending on what our designers would build, we'd have to think about that. And we would have a bigger plot of land to look at, right? Do we re-center it? Could we build somewhere where it doesn't impact the kids living there while we build? We would have to talk about that, but the bigger conversation for the board is, do we continue to lease it? Because we've been doing it for over a decade.
Right.
Or do we purchase it? Because obviously it's been a part of our community. There is an identity there. And then we own it and then we can do what we want to do it. We've made investments in that building, like Boiler was probably one of the biggest things we did recently. Um, we continue to make investments, but we don't own it, so it's like.
So that's my question, like, long-term, is it better that we're investing and purchasing it? Like, where's the cost benefit in purchasing versus continuing to lease it? Because we're pouring money into a building we don't.
My belief is worth purchasing it because not just the building, but what like Rich said, the land. It's a huge plot.
Okay.
It is.
So it now allows us to be innovative, think differently. Um, and again, not to take anything away from the Lincoln community, truly understand that. But that community wants something better for their kids, too, and it's literally a block away, uh, or maybe two blocks. Um, but the reality is they're both important parts, uh, schools to that community. So that community, I believe, deserves a state-of-the-art elementary school that we could give them. We couldn't give them to that on the Lincoln land. We could if we went and got to Kane land.
Okay.
Fulton School does not have access to the second floor, does it, elevator-wise? I thought it, I thought it.
There is no elevator at at Fulton.
That's what I thought.
So, but it is grandfathered in and allowed to be used for swing space?
I think we have only used in my time being here, uh, four classrooms, basically on the first floor. And I don't know what the International School, which was a charter school, used.
And I think Bosie's was there as well.
Bosie's had a a bit of it there as well, but but the International School was there. And I don't know whether they use the whole building or not. I don't, I don't think so, but I'm not.
We we've walked it. It could be used. We're painting it, trying to make it look good for swing space. Um, because it would just be swing space and then when we're all done with doing everybody else, we're gonna have to make a decision around Fulton. Do we then, you know, revitalize it and open it up a new elementary school in that region of the city? We we have the need when you think about our class sizes, our enrollment, um, you know, our pre-K. Our pre-K, we could take more pre-K kids. I wanna be clear, we could, we could take more pre-K kids in this district. We just don't have the place to put them.
And Priscilla, did you, you look like.
And I think at one point it was your early childhood was at Fulton.
Yeah, it was.
What is the cost per just Kane?
I don't know. We'd have to engage. I just need permission from the board to say, go out and 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 go out and try to pursue it or or just renew the lease. So we have not had that conversation initially. Um, they have given us a dollar amount of about two million dollars that they said they would be willing to part the building with. We have not necessarily engaged back.
So we've already spent over two million just leasing it, so it seems a waste to just keep putting money.
Mathematically, we've spent more than that, yes.
So I have a few questions. Um, the.
Yeah, plus the Boiler.
The first one is, um, because I do remember when the zoning and everything happened in the school district. And I think one of the, this was a long time ago and I wasn't on the board, but I know that the communication was a challenge, right? How, and I know this is looking way ahead, but I think that part of my concern is how are we gonna communicate with our community and our families and our parents and our administrators and our staff about these changes and how these changes are going to work and how that's going to impact, or not impact, um, our families. And I know it's maybe very premature, but I think a communication plan will be really important.
Yeah, so see that young lady right there to my left?
Yes.
Once I get the go-ahead from the board tonight, and tonight is a communication.
Yes.
Tonight, we are making this known. You know, we have, you know, reporter here from the Gazette listening in. There's gonna be something written on this. Um, you know, the reality is it starts today.
Yeah.
The communication and then, and I mentioned this earlier, we're gonna have to go out and have some tours to talk about what it does and then, you know, it's very personal for staff, right? Moving from building to building, so even here at the high school, we're gonna have to have a conversation. Uh, President Silvestri's in the audience for SFT. We've already started to have that conversation because to me it's important to protect the integrity of how the staff experiences. But the reality is we also know that sometimes that can get in the way for doing what's right for the kids and the community and their experience. So we just gotta find that balance. Um, but that starts now. That starts tonight. Tonight's the first form of communication. Board says, go ahead. We think this is great. Bring us back something more in two, you know, two meetings from now. Bring us a more finalized, bring a communication plan. That's kind of what I need to hear, but you're right, it's gonna be um a lot of over-communicating. And I think as a district, we're at a different level with communication than we were. Even when I arrived here two, you know, two years ago, you know, we have multiple modes of communication. Um, but it will always continue, uh, continuously require constant reminders, review. But today, we've listed the schools pretty boldly, right, to kind of like, so those schools are um kind of unaware. And if you notice in the audience, you'll even see some of those principals here because I already communicated to them that we were gonna be sharing some important information around their campuses.
Then the other question I have, and I think you all kind of answered this, but we've been doing so many capital projects, you know, projects. And then we have now this proposal. So just so I understand, the capital projects will continue because we have phase one, phase two, phase three, which we had phase one.
Yeah, so this is only phase one and phase two that you had done with some previous partners? This will, this will stop. This is now would be quote of the the new phase three into that old model. But we're calling it the Schenectady Revitalization Plan. And it's a longer window than the previous plan. So the previous ones were five-year kind of windows? And you would go back out for a vote for the next phase? I'm asking the board the permission to say, let's do this once, have a ten-year approval for three hundred million. Allow me to hit all these campuses, come back to you hopefully in twenty thirty for the next phase or the next revitalization at that point with different buildings. But those school buildings would be the primary focus of this plan. So, uh, in the old model was the phase three would be happening now, which is what you were familiar with. We've kind of reset that approach.
Okay.
And I put the slide back up. Those dollar amounts were what was done on those campuses and you noticed Oneida was the biggest one. Look at twenty-seven million dollars. And so that was when you took everyone out of that building and you had it closed for, I think, multiple years.
It was closed four years before it was, before it was started.
It was closed like it was never gonna open again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we were looking at selling it.
So the other question, and I know CSI actually had talked with us a while ago about this, but I'm just wondering with, I know with the capital projects, there were stakeholders part of the conversation, right, about the spaces and what they were looking for the spaces. I'm assuming that same model will be used for the Schenectady Revitalization.
Yeah, so uh, again, if you go back to that chart with the timeline.
Yep.
When we hit the approval, there's gonna be schematic design, there's gonna be uh focus groups, parents from each of the campuses, uh, staff from each of the campuses. We've right now focused high level with the principals, SEI has walked all the buildings with the principals. They've given them a wishlist of things they think were important. I'm just trying to get to that uh chart. But if you, if you just look in your packet, I think it's like the fourth slide is the chart. Oh, oh, and at the end, I did it twice. Look at that. Um, it it'll show you, and it says schematic design development, um, concept development. That's when those stakeholder groups are gonna have to get involved.
Okay.
So.
One of the problems we continue to face is that um it's typically the same parents and engaged members. Um, and and while we have made improvements of of reaching folks and more people participating in our buildings, it is still imperative to meet people where they're at and literally go to their doors, the way our attendance folks do, right? Um, if we're going to get more voices at the table, whatever Karen's plan is, is going to have to meet people where they're at. And and while we have all these new modes that are are helpful for people to reach us, there are still folks that won't even try to reach us. Um, so making sure we can get new voices in instead of um when I was not here and I was the parent, I saw the same people in the room and I was the same person in the room at every meeting when we did all of the remodeling and stuff, so.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to do some listening tours and some presentations at the library, public library, you know, partner, our partner at Sicum. See if they'll host us to do some kind of listening tour. And then I think we're gonna have to do some traditional mailings home of some postcards and, you know, by the way, here's some information.
Or door knocking.
Yeah.
Like, I'm, I'm very serious, the the, even when we're at Sicum. Sicum's a great partner, but if we don't, if people don't know we're at Sicum, it doesn't matter that we're right down the block from their house. Um, being able to knock on someone's door. Being able to knock on someone's door and say, here's this flyer because we're gonna be here. People don't always open the mail.
Got it.
So I have another question for you. In terms of, because I was gonna ask the same question, in terms of how many students are in each school? And I think that's really beneficial even from a research side, that the school, the elementary schools are small. So I'm not sure how the board feels, but, you know, even though they're a block or two apart from each other, having schools that have 200 and something students or 313 students in an elementary level where it's the foundation, personally, I think that's really critical. So I would hate to see 500 elementary schools together, you know, students together. And then also, what's gonna happen to the principals that are in those buildings? So that's just a side note, but then the other thing I wanted to mention with the highs, with the high school, both high schools, Scala and Schenectady High School, because I didn't see it on there. I know a huge issue that the kids had post, pre-COVID were the stalls. Because some of the stalls, you can say hi, I mean, you can have conversations with the kids within some of the stalls. I don't know if the high school is still like that, but I know Scala is, where the stalls are very low. And so that's, I didn't see that on there.
Yeah, we didn't put everything on there, but that bathrooms are a major piece. And just so you know, those are being done, Brian Dangler and his team are doing the high school ones kind of like beforehand.
Yes.
Because we can't wait two years to do bathroom stalls. We don't want people looking at, you know, over stalls. But like, the reality is some of this stuff will happen earlier in terms of capital improvements. Some of it will be part of the larger project. So we have some ongoing projects we want to share as well, but I want to make sure you have all your questions answered regarding, or, you know, the permission to kind of seek forward to move forward in this direction. And then come back to the board, knowing that we're also gonna prepare presentations for the community, set up some efforts for community engagement, do some door-to-door knocking, drop some flyers off, invite them to different things. But also, this piece around getting ready to educate our community around the vote in May. Because that's gonna take some work, too.
Yeah, and this actually is perfect because I wanted to ask a little bit more about FACE. What is your vision for this? I know you talked about it, right, to have a space for like, I'm thinking like central administration till that, you know, not central administration.
Yeah, not so much us, but portions of district office that don't service our families well in the current space that we're in at Mount Pleasant. I mean, if you think about it, you gotta go behind the school to get to our district office. The only way you know that it's there is an awning. There's no secure vestibule there, and again, we have to always think about that. So, and we're in a school building, so we invite people into registering in our community who we may or may not know, but they have direct access to a school building, so figuring out ways to make that better. My vision is a central registration place where if I'm an English language learner, there's somebody who can translate, and we've added a bilingual person at our student registration. But that it's a more of a welcoming environment versus two chairs in a hallway. And so sit there and wait there. That, to me, is the wrong piece. If we can create a space, and I put some pictures here of shared space where people can sit and gather and, you know, access a computer while our kid's registering, or hey, I need some information on housing and food. We could do more there. We've, the board has committed in last year's budget investment on parent liaisons. You know, we're hearing from them. They need, they want, people want spaces where parents can come to and maybe fill out a job application. We can do trainings with our parents. We have the director, Jesse Royland. They do adult education. It's at Washington Irving. But I would view a portion of that work at the parent center to say, how do you help people apply for job applications? But there would be components of district office that would need to shift to this place. And transportation's another thing our families always come for. And right now, they're like in the back corner. And, you know, my goal was to try to create, and I don't know if it's possible, but allow me the permission to explore a facility that will house this so that eventually we can create it as a community hub. And I think Jamaica mentioned this last time. There is work pursuing a community center, but there's still a lot of work to do that. And if we figure out ways, maybe that's something we can engage with them to say, maybe that, I think it's the Carver.
There's two different community centers. There's Miracle on Craig Street, the old Carver building. But there's also over on the north side, there's one that's starting. This district used to have a separate registration building back when I was a child. It's a long time ago.
So, you know, that's something, I just want permission from the board. This wouldn't necessarily be a part of the capital project unless it was in an existing building that we converted to become a, what I'm calling a family and community engagement center or FACE. You know, we like our acronyms in education.
So tonight, you're not looking necessarily for an official vote, but just kind of like a.
Feedback and input.
Has anybody, the other place that strikes me in the district that has space is Zoller. It has a lot of land around it. Has there been any consideration of anything being created over there?
No, they didn't come up on our kind of list of kind of high needs because we were also trying to.
I know it's not probably the highest need, but, but at the same time, it has, it has the land.
It has, yep, but it's, I think, more at an elevated slope, right?
It is a slope.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's a hill.
Come on, you guys, you fill in slopes.
I think it should be a farm. There's no reason why Zoller shouldn't be the first community farm that we build.
So it's not off the table. We can go back and explore. But we had prioritized ones that have not been touched and the age of some of these buildings.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about Zoller itself. I was thinking of the land around it. Is there, is there possible, are there possibilities for using some, using some of that because it is the next, it may be the largest piece of land the school district owns. You know.
Yeah.
Flat out. I mean, because when you talk about parking difficulties, I mean, Fulton is no prize.
It is not.
Up in that neighborhood, it's a triangle that it comes to, and it's, it's not good.
So any other questions?
I just have one more. How do we not underutilize XL8 in the future?
Oh, we're gonna use it for this, so it won't no longer be around.
That guy right there.
But in the past, it was not used.
Right.
It was just kind of left alone.
Well, we carried it, we carried it from Phase One to Phase Two. I don't know how it was all expended, but I know it was part of the planning.
Yeah, it was, and that's why we went and were like, we're gonna use this for this to offset taxpayer costs.
Because there was six something million there at one point.
We, we're gonna have better bookkeeping, Prinsella. And we got a guy over here that found it.
We've got a Mount Pleasant alumni keeping the books.
See what I'm saying? Mount Pleasant. So if there are no other questions, thank you.
Yep, and I'm just gonna shift over to kind of the ongoing projects because there is some stuff here. I purposely wanted to kind of keep them two separate conversations. So I do want to thank the board. We will, we will pursue this avenue, working towards further education, bring some more stuff back to the board and update, and then, you know, be ready for a potential May vote for the community, separate from our budget, okay? Ongoing project updates, so this is really hard to see, so I apologize. But just wanted to tell you that, separate from that $300 million conversation, we are making enhancements, starting this summer and spring in some of our schools. So one of them in particular that I'll dig into, and you can see this timeline, is the high school tennis courts. We're reconstructing that. You remember the board voted on that, I believe it was last year. So that's gonna be what it looks like now. It's gonna be expanded parking. And I think it's important because people need to see some victories, some wins. So you're gonna see this tennis court is gonna start in the spring. Am I correct, Alistair? This spring, right? Alistair is the guy that put up our scoreboard, so he's, he always delivers. And so you're gonna see an expansion of our tennis courts and then our parking, because we do lose some parking at the top, we're gonna add it towards the bottom where the bus loop is and reconfigure that entry there. So I just wanted to show that to you. This is a new one that you guys do not know about. This is brand new tonight, so you're getting first dibs on this. This does not require a vote. I do think this is a necessary project on a personal level. Those Belmont young youth who play on that current field now are gonna go crazy when they see what we do for them here. And those are our kids. Those are our babies that come up through the system. And we're gonna give them an ideal, a similar experience. But if we move the freshmen over to this side of town, they're gonna need a place, too, to play because we can't build something like this on Stuyman's campus. But this will be there as well. This will allow us to hold more athletic competitions without fighting over the current turf that we have. So this would be a new turf field. It would fit on our plot of land. It would address the challenges of parking currently at the back of Mount Pleasant. And depending on what time you get there, you're either at that little back gray Boys and Girls Club unfinished lot over here if you get there too late in the morning. So this will expand. This will help our Boys and Girls Club a little bit with parking as well to service them. But this was already gonna be covered, and Terry will share this. We've already budgeted for this through existing funding resources. And so this is going to happen, starting this summer. Am I correct, guys? We're aiming to start, break ground this summer.
Is it gonna be turf or grass?
Yeah, no more one-way. Now, you pick up all the surprises, Jamaica. Yeah, no more one-way on Education Drive, baby. It'll be, it'll be to and through. But it'll be a turf stadium. It'll allow for all, it's wide enough to do soccer, lacrosse. The other thing is we would add bleachers that no longer exist on the other side. So when we have visitors, they would be able to sit there. If you notice on the other drawing, we would also have the shot put and the discus throw that currently don't exist. This is all of our property, by the way, guys. This black line is all our property. This belongs to the city. So we did not want to ask them for it. We just wanted to stay in our envelope. Okay, and this would be, one other change you see here would be a new, what do we call that?
Shed?
Not a shed. What's up at the top? Concession stand, which if you ask the Little League, the youth, it would be, we would either relocate, we would build a new one, but the one that's down there, we would rededicate it to the, to the individual. I think it's Secretary Lawson's grandfather, is it? So, yeah, we would redo this. These ones down here are storage. There's a bunch of storage sheds at the bottom. And then there is the one food concession stand, but it would also have bathrooms outside, which is another thing.
Where's the additional parking?
Right here. So right now, if you were to look at this, the school, the field goes right up to this line right here currently. The field, the field right now, the back of the fence goes right there. We would be expanding it out, and then this would be all brand new. This track would also be an eight-lane track, so we could have high school competitions happen here. It's just a really great thing, I think, for that Mount Pleasant community to have that right in their community. We have the Blue Jays, Little League Field just down the street, and they've done some really good work renovating that place. I think for the work that our Belmont youth boys, and we want to add modified football. They did a great season this past year. We want to continue to grow our programming. This field will be part of this. And again, this would not require voter approval because we've already budgeted for this.
It is long overdue.
It is long overdue, but it, it would be great, so. So surprise, this is new because no one knew this was coming. We've been keeping this under wraps for a little bit.
So the Education Drive is blocked off at the Norwood end of the thing?
So educate, yeah, this goes this way. This is an old map, so Boys and Girls Club's actually here to see the. So this goes that way. So it would go all the way through.
There's no entrance from this side?
There is, right here.
Oh, you're, oh, it still is an entrance.
Yeah, Norwood, yeah, Norwood.
It looked like a barrier to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's asphalt. So you'd be able to come in here, and then we'd have two lanes. And then one thing I think is really cool is we'd have this cool walkway from the school concrete. And I know you guys will love this. We've added green space along the front, the side of the building, which is where our district office is currently. And, you know, we would look to not have people park right up to the side of the school. We've talked about this earlier. These are already happening. Stuymitz, there's a secure entry vestibule, again, and cafeteria improvements, we're gonna do regardless. That's happening this, going on, starting this summer. Some of it already occurred with the vestibule. Mount Pleasant, we're talking about doing a secure vestibule there as well and readjusting that. So I'm not gonna spend too much time on these, but just to give you an idea, Yates is getting a kitchen renovation, much-needed kitchen renovation over there. So there's gonna be some partial new work, reconfiguration of the layout. They're excited on that. Pleasant Valley, this is new, new-ish. We're gonna redo their cafeteria. We're gonna reconstruct and add to that cafeteria at Pleasant Valley. Currently, it looks like this on the left side. It will look like this when we're done with it. So now you notice we've doubled the capacity. We've added a bigger line, storage for after-school programming. And this has been done with the work of Elaine Reynolds and her team and the principal. I know the principal is gonna be ecstatic to find this out because it was one of the things she asked before, and I'm like, I can't push the wall open, but we can figure this out at some point. And we did do good work there. They put brand-new stairwells there in the last phase. They've done some classroom work on the first floor. The one thing they just didn't have the capacity to touch was the cafeteria. And so this is separate from the capital project, so I want to be clear. This is gonna happen irregardless of that $300 million vote. This is a big one for me. Personal favorite of mine is playgrounds. Recession is so important for our kids, and so we're gonna upgrade four of our schools' playgrounds. No matter what. We've built this in the budget in our American Rescue Plan. They prioritize outdoor learning spaces and outdoor spaces for kids, given the pandemic. And so we're gonna do some of that work here. These are just drawings by the vendor of recommendations. This will be worked with the building principal. And one thing that'll be done here that's important is that it'll be ADA compliant. So there'll be some of the rides that'll be specific for students in wheelchairs and things of that nature, which we currently do not have. Terry, you wanna talk about funding this?
And just a note on the playgrounds. If they're not included in the American Recovery Plans, they will be picked up in the capital project for the other elementary schools that were not identified there. So everybody will get the playground. Yep.
Save me a question, Terry.
There you go. So basically, how are we gonna pay for those projects that are currently going on? Last, during the 2223 budget, if you remember, we had that repair reserve, Capital Repair Reserve Fund, for about $4 million that we identified. The Schenectady High School tennis courts, the Fulton Boiler, the Page Abatement, and to Washington Irving Waterline. So that's gonna cover those expenditures that they're currently working on. The cafeteria kitchen projects that we discussed at the two buildings, we currently have a school lunch reserve fund for $5.6 million, and that's gonna cover that work on those two programs. And then the American Rescue Funds, the funds that were related to the COVID relief. We're gonna work on them. It was identified for the Mount Pleasant Track and Field. We had money designated for that. We had the playgrounds identified for that. We had outdoor learning space for that. So we're currently working with the state to make sure our Mount Pleasant field falls under the requirements of the outdoor learning space and the improvements to the sidewalks and the grounds. They were identified, like throughout the district, but we're gonna allocate it more towards Mount Pleasant to fund the field in the outside area and the learning spaces that we're adding out there. So that money will be coming from the American Rescue Funds. And then, just to mention, back to the Capital Repair Reserve. At the next meeting, when you use those funds out of that reserve fund, we have to have a public hearing. So basically, we're just gonna invite the public to have any input on tennis courts, Fulton Boiler, Page Abatement, and Washington Irving. That's a New York State education requirement. And the final expenditures that we currently have in every budget is the Capital Outlay, which is $100K per school year that we include in the budget. And we get the state aid automatically on the following year. So we get $98,000 to any $100K project. Currently, we're doing one here at the high school. Some, what is it, a water? Yeah, the water heater at the high school for the 2223, and we're, yeah, the high school pool. And we're identifying for the 2324 budget currently, looking at a possibility of reconstructuring the main office at the Hamilton School because that was not completed when they did their capital project. So those $100,000 K improvement, that will already be covered for state aid at $98,000. Any questions on those?
So again, the timeline's important, just to tell you that there's stuff happening now that will happen irregardless of the capital project vote. We're gonna continue to try to maximize the resources that we have. We're in a really great place to do some really great things. And, you know, we're excited. For me, the playgrounds are gonna be like huge wins in some of these campuses. But those kitchen renovations are also gonna be equally big because it allows our staff to do some more food and meal prep for our kids that, right now, a lot of the food comes right here from the high school and has to be shipped over to it. So in some cases, all we're doing is warming up food. So any questions for myself or any of the partners at SEI? I do want to thank the board for, you know, listening and giving me the flexibility to have some opportunity to be innovative on this approach. It is a different approach for us. Typically, this would have been just a smaller $60 million conversation. I do think it's in, we're at a point now where we need to take some bold steps, do some bold things on campuses that we know we're gonna need regardless of enrollment.
I do have two quick questions. One, Scala, I forgot to ask this. Are the Scala, is Scala aware of some of these? Have there been more conversations with them about what Scala might be looking like in the next few years?
So right now, we've only talked about their current students that they have. And, you know, right now, this past year, we didn't add more kids on purpose because we knew, we weren't sure programmatically where we were gonna be. Plus, from a programmatic side, we need something different, not only on that campus, but to fall in this alternative learning, different pathway kind of conversation. So they are aware of that. We met with their staff, Deputy Soup, and Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Omeely. Um, so they are aware of that. We met with their staff, Deputy Soup, and Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Omeely. Met with them, and they also sent the communication to their staff to say, we're going to be talking about this tonight, knowing that that building in the next couple of years will phase out and be focused for construction to introduce the freshmen over there. Um, that was important because we allow those kids to finish out there if needed. Um, but I would tell you that we are going to see probably where they started from enrollment and where they are now has dropped because a lot of the kids have either, you know, just stopped attending. Um, they're 17, they've emancipated, they, they don't want to come no more, or we've withdrawn them, or they're going GED, or you know, they've chosen some other options. So you know, we continue to do that work, um, to be sensitive to say like, you can still stay here and finish out 11th and 12th grade year here. Um, but the other thing is, we also want to invite those kids back potentially to the high school. If they want to come back to the high school, why not have an opportunity to come back? Um, and then some kids don't want to come back. They've told us that.
And then the last question I have, and it could, I know the list wasn't exhaustive, but um, tech spaces, are we going to have more, um, you know, 21st century, 20, you know?
Yeah, I mean, steam classrooms, interactive, uh, boards and rooms versus, you know, um, we've done a pretty good job changing them, but you know, we had a conversation, Ken and I, about what do we look at? Do we have interactive boards like this on wheels, or people can move them around? Because we know teachers change rooms and people become really, you know, the ownership on their interactive boards. Whenever I go, I want it to go with me, but um, yeah, the goal is state of the art. We have Wi-Fi in all our buildings. We want to talk about flexible furniture potentially so they can work in groups, be in roles. So all of that is going to be open to conversation. We haven't even had that yet. And that's really a granular building conversation. So when we talk about the high school, we talk about reconstruction, what are these pathways? What do they need? What kind of classrooms do they need? What kind of learning spaces do they need? We don't really have any type of kind of career technical spaces, you know? But my hope is that we have that conversation. Bosse is a great partner, but they can't take all of our kids. So how do we figure out which ones we can, we can augment and, and fit, and which ones are different?
What's the, what's the work that hasn't been done at Van Corleone? I was surprised to see that never done on there because I know we took, uh, the um, auditorium and the gymnasium, and, and there was a change in the balcony and some of the-
Yeah, some of the work was not done. It was originally proposed in the, in the phase plan.
Yeah, I, I didn't-
And it was just because cost of others, of the other projects.
Oh, I know the-
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head. We can look to see.
And I, I guess that's one of my concerns about the, when you're talking 300 million for 10 years, is the costs are going to go up. I mean, we can almost certainly agree to that. So, you know, how, you know, I, I, I don't recall right at the moment why we did two and three year projects. I thought it had to do with how we could finance it without impact on the taxpayers. But when we're talking 10 years out with that much, um, inflation possibility in there, how do we guarantee that we're going to be able to get done most, at least of what, of what we're projecting over that length of time? I mean, I think little smaller segments would be, would be more, um, uh, you know, you could, you could forecast those better. Uh, that's what worries me about trying to go for something that's as long term as this.
Yeah, so it's only seven years, so I want to beg, it's not 10.
Oh, I thought you said ten.
The approval is 10 years. The approval gives us 10 years. So when we go out to the voters, we get a 10 year approval.
Uh, 2030 is where we were talking before. I know that that's where we were.
So 2030, um, so it's seven years, but the other piece in this cost is they've built in contingency. So in those dollar amounts that I showed you for each of the schools,
Well, everybody has to-
There's like, I think, what, 20% or 15% contingency, um.
As, as we start moving through the process of CS and our estimates, what would those contingency think of like?
Yeah.
Because we don't see that in the last couple of years in this law. So we base it on, on fitting numbers that we see now, projections that we're getting from industry and things like that. We still have to keep those contingencies.
And how does this fit within our constitutional debt limit? I, we don't have to answer that tonight, but that's one of the things that has me.
Sure, yeah. Terry, constitutional debt limit? Yeah.
I'm not-
But we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, yep. Yeah, but we, but let, let's just know, we met with fiscal advisors. They gave us this blueprint of like what you're allowed to do, given the debt that we have coming off.
Yes.
We have a lot of debt coming off, so we're allowed to pursue these, and then these would be, um, not everything would be, we would get approval for 300 million. We wouldn't go out and borrow 300 million right off the bat.
Oh, not all at one time.
Right, so I just want to be clear, because sometimes you hear that, like, you think a home loan, like, oh, I'm on a $300,000 home loan. I'm getting it all at one time for a home. This would be approval for it, but we would be getting it over a period of time. And remember, the first schools that we start off with, they would come off five years later, and then the other schools would be on. So just, I just want to make sure that you understand that. Maximum cost allowance is a five year window.
Well, thank you.
Any other thing, just to answer your question?
Sure, sure.
Just to circle back to your question about programming and starting and, and talking about what needs to be done in the buildings. We've done it in small sessions. Uh, we've done, we've done utilization studies across each building. We've talked with each one of the principals, had great level meetings, understanding that. We've done enrollment studies against where your students are at each individual building versus district wide. What does that look like at each building? How, how is your classes with enrollment, all those things? But the, the more important thing is, in this conversation of the high school, back in September, we met with the administrative staff. A, a significant number of your teachers came in. We had a great, uh, work session where we broke it down into the learning academies and then talked about each one of them and what, what do we need to make them right? Because right now, we've, we've taken these learning groups and learning academies and placed them in space. And what we're going to do throughout this project is transform this building to, to develop and create spaces that are needed to address those programs. So that's the goal, is to really transform this building and meet the needs of the students and create those environments that we need to give them the great learning experience.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now we're going to transition to the board goals. Before we proceed though, everyone has a copy, a hard copy? Yeah, and it's also in the board docs. But I wanted just to say, on our December 14th board meeting, we started reviewing the draft BOE goals. We started with looking at the four goal categories. And as you see up on the screen, those four goal categories were, or are, should I say, fiscal responsibility, governance, excellent in student learning, support equity, and partnership and communication with families, community, and staff. And the first thing that we did on December 14th, because this was a while ago, but, um, we looked at the four categories, and I asked the board, how do we feel about the four categories? And everyone said, we're good with the categories. But then we started taking a look at the description. So I am going to kind of rewind for a minute. The, the foundation or the basis to look at the categories or the goals and the description and the activities or matrix, they're based off of the superintendent's goals. They're also based on our roles and responsibilities. So on page one, those are the roles and responsibilities of the board. The first set of bullets are from our, our website. They're a condensed version of our roles and responsibilities. But then below that, you see what does our school, what does a school board do? Those, uh, those are more comprehensive. And you'll notice at the end, at, um, at the end of the list, it came from NISBA. But also from New York State Ed, they have some information as well. So this is just a, a synopsis of what our roles and responsibilities are. So keeping in the back of our heads, when we're looking at our goals and our responsibilities, or how we're going to move forward, we should be looking at all these things. And then just to remind everyone, on page two, those are Superintendent Soler's super, and superveval goals. And he briefly, at the last meeting on the 14th, in his comments, he shared what his goals were. And these are the goals that are here. And then on page three, again, a reminder to everyone, page three is our vision, our mission, our goals, or should I say, our vision, goals, slogan, or mantra, um, organizational values, and then a snippet of the strategic plan pillars that we hear every single time when our, 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 um, administrators come up and do their presentation. So again, when we're looking at the goals, we want to kind of keep in mind all those pieces. Okay, so we're going to start with number one, fiscal responsibility. And what the language, and again, a quick reminder, there was some conversation around the language. And at first it said develop, and we had some conversations that, oh, the board doesn't really develop the, um, the budget. So this, these were the things that were proposed. And if you don't mind me reading it to you. So it was review and request changes necessary to adopt. And then a budget that provides academic resources, support, services, and personnel for all students incorporating diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the reason why that's highlighted too is that we had a little conversation, well, should be include, um, belonging. But then there was a conversation, but yeah, then there's all these other terms that can be attached to it. So then we decided that DEI would be the best thing to do. Um, concepts were presenting an attainable and fiscally responsible budget that responds to taxpayers. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to start with that piece in terms of what we changed. Are we good with review and request changes necessary to adopt?
I think that reflects what we talked about.
You're good? Okay. So I'm going to move to the second one, and we had two suggestions for that one. So the first one said, the BOE will continue to encourage and support a participatory budgeting process in the 202223 school year to pursue additional input from stakeholders. And then, or, the second sentence is exactly the same. The only thing is that the word continued is not included in there.
I think we said the first one was the better one. We'll continue.
Well, I, I think about, you know, I take Superintendent Soler's goals, or anytime you write like a SMART goal or a goal. You know, say, I think it was, you know, decrease suspension rates by 2%. And say that goal is similar next year. He's not going to write, I'm going to continue to decrease suspension goals by 3%. And now he's just going to say, I'm going to decrease it by this percent. So I think, in my opinion, the continue part is not necessarily
Okay, okay.
Important.
How do others feel?
I agree.
You agree? Vivian, any thoughts?
Oh, I agree.
Okay, okay, so, and how, what do you, how do you feel, Prinsella?
I'm fine.
You're fine either way? Okay, so then we're going to go with the second one? We're okay? So the one that we're going with, it sounds like the BOE will encourage and support, again, without the word in continue. Okay, so if everyone is okay, let's take a look at, so originally, when we were looking at this too, the word benchmark was there, and there was some conversation around that. Eh, benchmarks is not the word. So, um, I know activities came up, and then matrix. So I'm not sure, and I know this may be like semantics, but do we want to identify those as activities, matrix, or another word?
You mean metrics?
Mm-hmm, metrics.
But ma- matrix sounds like the-
Oh, you don't like the metrics?
Television program.
Yeah.
At a certain time, we enter.
Activities was what struck me. I mean, specific things that we might do. And, and that's why I suggested that. Right now, I can't think of what those are, but, but there are some, so.
I think we don't, sorry. I think in order for, we're going to call them metrics, we need to have some kind of measurable piece associated with each. So unless we want to add that to each, I don't know if metrics is necessarily the correct or appropriate term to use.
Okay.
I was thinking benchmarks, are these our benchmarks?
We had originally benchmarks, but there was some concern about using benchmarks.
Yeah, or like timeline that we have to complete the benchmarks.
If it's metrics or benchmark, it's something you can measure in these activities.
These are things we could do.
Our activities. So are we okay with activities? Okay? If we want to, we can revisit this though. I mean, because this is, you know, we can revisit the word. Okay.
We just know it's not metrics.
Yes, we know it's not, yes, you got it. Okay, so, yeah.
It's also not pursuits. I look up synonyms for activities, that won't be me.
So we'll revisit that, okay? So let's take a look, if you don't mind, the four, I'll just call them activities just for now, so I can call them something, but the four activities listed. How are we, I'll, I'll read them to you. Are you okay with that, or do you want to look at it on your own?
What does the, our audience need to hear?
Yeah, okay, thank, so, yeah.
It's on the screen.
It's not board notes too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Encourage me if I'm wrong. Did we go over this a little bit last time? I feel like, we didn't?
No.
I just read it in my head.
Yeah, we didn't get that far.
I thought we talked about something about, I had a whole imagination scenario in my head.
So, so minor thing, um, because, so the letter A says the board will, and then the other ones don't, so Consistency? We would take out, like, the board will would just be separate, and then what are the things we will do? Or we're putting the board will at each, before everything. Yeah, so the board will then, let's say, one, support programs that are grounded, two, provide opportunities or something like, okay.
And with D, I feel like that's maybe one we can actually, um, attach something more specific to. So for instance, schedule a professional development work session for board members who are on school budgets by da-da-da-da-da. You know what I'm saying? Just to kind of hold ourselves more accountable to making sure that we follow through with that one.
That would be great.
Yeah.
What? That would be great. Yeah. How do folks feel about both, um, recommendations or suggestions? So the first one, Jamaica had stated the board will, and then list, you know, the kind of bullet him or number them. We're good with that for suggestion? Kathy, you're good?
Sure.
Okay, all right. And then the second suggestion, Erica mentioned for D, kind of add some more specifics there. How does, how do people feel? Yep. Just looking for the, Kathy, you're okay with that too? Okay.
I feel like that's one that can be more measurable, unless, you know, we want to be like, you remember, or ask seven questions when Honeyball and Terry presents the budget. No, I'm just kidding, we're not doing that. Um, but there, there's so broad, you know, I feel like that we can actually be a little bit more measurable with the checkoff we did it.
Okay. How, for D, do you want to give me some suggestions now, or do you want me to kind of bring another draft of some suggestions, and then we can kind of cut those out?
Of a date by?
It should be before we actually do the budget. I mean, we should have-
March.
Before March.
Yeah, okay. So, because our budget meeting is in March.
So February.
So we definitely will have it before March.
March 1st.
Okay, so are we okay, I just want to, so are we okay if, do you want us to bring, do you want me to bring suggestions of listed things there, and then we can just delete whatever? Or do you want to brainstorm some of those lists, the, the, you know, do you want to brainstorm some of them right now in terms of D?
In terms of, oh, what do you, what do you mean?
You mean dates?
Dates?
Yeah. Oh, dates. I mean, I think if we just, you know, pick a date, you know, by March 1st or by, you know?
Okay.
Because if we have to do it by March 1st, that's when budget season starts.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Okay, I got it. Okay, so are we okay with number one, with those changes or updates?
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, awesome. All right, okay, so number two, governance.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, I, I just keep reading B over and over and over again.
Okay.
Provide opportunities for all stakeholders to participate in budget forums. I feel like two things. One, what does that mean? Are we doing something other than having a budget forum? Like, what are we doing? As opposed to where, in the fiscal responsibility, we say, we'll encourage and support participating, participatory budget process, right? Like, are we being duplicative by saying B because we said we were going to-
In the description?
Yeah, because we mentioned it in the description. Or is this supposed to be something different? Are we saying we're going to be intentional in outreach or something, like it's?
Yeah.
Is it separate or the same?
Yeah, I think this is what, because I know we get sent, is it spotlight? The budget information, we get sent the bu, you know, that. We also, I know Karen sent something else. We get several things sent prior to the budget. The one that's sticking out to me right now is the spotlight. And then I know they do kind of like the, um,
But that's at the end of the process.
That's true.
That, all of that's at the end of the process prior to the vote, the, the spotlight, the budget, the, uh, report card, the and, and, and some of those are mandated by, by the, by state ed.
But then the visits to the schools, those are the budget forums, right? Because I know we used to do that. I don't know if we do that anymore.
We don't, we've taken a different approach every, no, I shouldn't say every year, but over a number of different.
I would just say there's things that we're doing as administration.
Yeah.
And I think really what the board wants to do, I think, you know, I'm not going to speak for Jamaica, but I think what you were saying is, what else does the board want to do as opposed to just public forums?
Right.
That's a very good interpretation of Jamaica. No, you were restating what I said for clarity.
So just so you know, we, you know, Terry and his team, uh, they go out and they meet with every school, school by school. When we do the required ones by the state, the public forum, things like that, but I just want to make sure like-
Okay. And I feel like that was our conversation last time. Like, when we say participatory, what does it mean as for us? Yeah. So I don't know if B is even- I mean, no, and I hear what you're saying. Now I understand a little bit. I, I understand. I remember, and I don't know if you were on the board, I think you were, you were, when Terry had a bu, but Terry had a budget hearing. And unfortunately, we only had one person come, but they spoke to us and Terry at the board meeting. So that's like one example, but I guess that's just one example. But that's the, that's the state one. That's the state mandated. Yeah, that's the required after we already voted. Yeah, yes.
So my question is too, like, kind of based on- So my question is too, like, kind of based on, peeling off what Jamaica says, like, let's be real, it's January 4th, right? Like, March 1st is gonna be here very soon. Is this change to maybe, we are working together to come up with a process moving into the following year, where we're providing more opportunities, like, if we're doing the school thing like Anibal had said, where we're having different forums there, but this year, we're working on the planning piece, because, let's be realistic, we're not gonna come up with it, roll it out all by, when we march 1st, and maybe this year's a planning piece, so we can have a process in place for next budget season.
Yeah, and I think the, the board president said last time, that this would be really for goals for next year, but you're having the dialogue now. So you're, you're right thinking that.
What if, taking what everyone said? The board will, 'cause that's the beginning of each sentence. Board will work with the superintendent and his staff for participation in budget forums.
Yeah, to provide, yeah.
What was the last part, Jamaica, the participation of?
In budget forums.
Of, okay. Okay, awesome, how do people feel about that?
How do we do that? What does that mean?
We figure it out later.
I mean, but that's a valid question, so how do we do that? I mean, it's a valid question, though.
Because that's.
So you will work with me and Nancy. Yeah, I think, I think it'll give you time to say what you'd like to see happen.
I mean, we did, we did meetings in all the schools where board members were there, we had people from the community. We had, we had a detailed, a detailed list of things, we asked the schools, I'm sorry, the, the.
The budget book was so much fun. I mean, we.
And what value they placed on it, waiting, you know?
We currently have work sessions.
Yep.
Thank you, Bernice. And so, like, we could have a work session that is, you know, at least part of it is dedicated to, what would it look like? You know, which I'm sure Anibal already has ideas.
I think that the goal's putting on a radar, like, hey, this is something you wanna work on and be more intentional about in the upcoming year.
So would we be opposed to maybe including some of those ways that we encourage that participation? For example, the work sessions, the presentations, the discussions, the forums, and then including those in section B to make it more specific and keep us focused on exactly what we're trying to do by that deadline?
Okay, awesome. Yep. How does everyone feel? About that?
Good, that sounds great.
Yeah. Okay. Are we okay to move on?
Yes, ma'am.
We're okay? Awesome.
Nice.
Okay, so then the next one, governance. So I will read the description. The, the board will promote and continue to develop a strong governance team with the superintendent, district clerk, executive cabinet, district leaders, and a student board representative. The board will commit to being present, prepared, and ready to discuss, create, revise, and adopt policies, procedures, and protocols that support and guide our district.
I'm good with that.
Okay, you're good.
Do we need to take out "continue"?
I knew you got it.
Yes.
I thought it was gonna be you, Erica? You're Erica. Yeah, do we wanna, or?
Yeah, the board will promote.
Promote and develop.
And develop, yeah.
Promote and develop? We're okay? Okay.
I was thinking, Jamaica, I was gonna argue about the word retreat, 'cause we all know they're not retreats. Had this conversation numerous times.
They're not retreats, they're not really retreats.
We didn't get to that part yet, Erica. All right, so are we okay with that description, and we will delete, continue? Okay? All right, great. All right, so activities, let's take a look at those and see how we feel. It's not a retreat.
No, but for A, for O, do we wanna, 'cause I feel like A is something we can make more measurable, schedule a minimum of blank board retreats.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying, 'cause we always have the one, for sure.
Yes. Yeah, I, yeah, we usually have one, this year we had two.
Two.
Kinda liked the two. I personally liked the two, I almost think that we might, should have three. But shouldn't we call it professional development, just like we do for everybody else? Because we are not sitting around and having cake and tea, y'all. Absolutely. The other, just to throw it out there, when you said numbers, we had two this year, but going to the National School Board Association, there was, and I'm going to Nohalani this, 'cause I mentioned her name to her, there was a presenter that was amazing, Chanelle, I forgot her last name, and she did, the workshop that I attended was about board governance. And she was powerful, and then I was thinking, hey, this might be a great, kind of like, once we get our feet wet and get into it, having her come and do some kind of professional development around board governance, in addition to what we have with NISBA.
You probably can't afford her?
Well, I mean, she, we'll see, but anyway, it was, but she was very powerful, and I think that, that she would be very beneficial for us. Just a thought, so going to what you said, I think it is important to kind of put that number there.
Yeah.
I don't know, how do people feel about that? Do we wanna start with just two? Oh, go ahead.
I don't know if this is descriptive enough, I know we don't wanna be overly exhaustive. Especially if in the future there are new people coming in, we want them to be able to look at this and have, okay, I get it.
Okay.
We want, I feel like it would be beneficial to have a plain language possible, as possible, so scheduling board, board retreats, or.
More professional.
Right, professional, with the purpose of.
Wait, hold on, one second, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, finish it up, but.
With the purpose of building professional development, or surrounding board governance, or with the purpose of orienting new board members in the future, or whatever, we feel we may, we should include in clause A. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
Would it work, based on what you said, Vivian, if it's schedule board professional development to build strong governance, a strong governance team, or something like that, right? So it's, the professional development is for governance?
Developing and strengthening a board governance, something to that effect.
Okay, I'm opposed to the elimination of the term "retreat," because that means, that distinguishes it as being just us and not having to be held in public. And that's, that's a basic concept of, of the retreat versus, you know, when, when we had the Capitol District School Boards Association meeting, I would refer to that, where we had a speaker come in as a public, as a professional development activity. But, but a retreat is a retreat for a reason, and it's, it's contrasted very much even in our retreat. They make that very significant distinction. So I think we need to use the word "retreat."
So the state makes us call it a retreat, even though, even though we only have Panera.
Oh, is that what it's about? With better food.
On a Saturday morning, and do not provide childcare. So the first, I think, Erica, was it you? 'Cause you kinda used both the word "board retreat" and "professional development," was it you, Jamaica?
I think it's both of us.
Yeah, both of you, 'cause I mean, maybe the compromise would be to include.
Yeah, it makes sense what Kathy said, if we have to use the word, you know, schedule board retreat with.
For the purpose of.
Professional development as it relates to creating a strong governance body, or whatever the other words were.
And I, and I just wanna echo what Kathy was saying regarding, I just went on NISBA's site, and it says, "Retreats, under the state's open meetings law, allow the board to meet privately to discuss organizational matters involving like, training and, you know, things like that." So, I think the retreat terminology is extremely important.
Look at y'all. Hard.
So it sounds like, and I don't know if I captured this correctly, let me see, schedule, okay, so, schedule board retreats for the purpose of professional development to build a strong governance team.
A minimum of twice per year. A minimum of twice per year.
A minimum of twice per year.
Maximal of three?
Nope.
A maximum of three. Are we okay with that language for A? Okay. Prinsella, we're okay? You're okay too? Nohalani? Okay, okay. I'm doing the teacher pause. You forgot to say, "Does anyone disagree?" All right, so, it looks like, I think, the last one we're gonna get to is B. Okay, so let's look at B. Onboard new board members, develop a training process, a school board one-on-one handbook and governance booklet. So I don't think we're gonna get through B. Just, just the beginning is too vague. Onboard new board members. We've all been there. It, like, it, there's a need for more intentionality about what that means. I mean, in, in this includes, you know, there's gonna be a school board one-on-one handbook and governance booklet. So it's, are we going to ensure an onboarding process for new board members that includes? Yeah. Blah, 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 blah? Exactly.
The one thing in our, the, the school board book, what do you call it, governance booklet, school board booklet? In our committee, like, that's one thing we, that was like, one of the first thing we started talking about, was the onboarding process. And we were talking about a lot of good ideas, like the one-on-one thing, but also, you know, you get elected, what does that look like? What do you get first? How do you meet with the board president? So that was something that was very intentional in our first meeting, and I know we have another one coming up soon. So I think, you know, 'cause we've only had one meeting, and we shared a little bit, but I, you know, it has been happening in the committee, and I, it's very intentional in that, 'cause I remember when we first got elected, we were like, what is happening? I don't know what to do.
I wanted to add to that, the HR hat is popping up right now for me. So, when I hear onboarding, I hear that it's different from orientation. So onboarding gets you acquainted with systems, processes per se, but orientation gets you specifically familiar with what, what are your roles and responsibilities on the board, getting you familiarized with everyone in the dish, within the dish that you will be working with potentially, on a regular or semi-regular basis. So I personally feel that for new people coming on to the board, maybe having that differentiated would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because you really are talking about two different things, and also committing to, like she said, be more intentional behind a specific orientation process for new board members.
Yeah, and to your point, we are actually thinking about doing both. There is an onboarding, but there's an orientation, but I think what you just said about really maybe clarifying it here?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point.
Be more intentional, I think that's a good point as well.
Yeah, the differentiation.
Which would mean, including both words.
Yes.
Like, ensure an onboarding and orientation process for new board members. And maybe it's not necessarily listing all of the things, because there are so many things that should be listed.
Yeah.
But, being specific to Vivian's point of saying, ensure there's an onboarding and orientation process for new board members.
Which I think is good, 'cause it doesn't matter, you know, now, or three years, or four years, who the board president is, like, there's a checklist, a process that goes through, that is consistent for all new board members.
So, I agree with board member Jamaica, that it's probably too much to put in here. But going back to what you were talking about, Erica, as far as the, the work that you guys are working on, would it be possible, and I don't know if this is something that's even being done, but it was one of the questions that I had as a new board member, was just someone to help mentor me? Because I didn't know what I was doing when I came onto the board, so I don't.
Did we talk about that?
We didn't really talk about it yet.
Um.
But we have not dug into it, but we were not surprised to see this when it came up, that it really was the city's property, so they had to like, go through a city council piece, they presented it to city council, and then had to come over to us, as the official title, because of the, uh, transfer of ownership.
Well, I guess my question then is, is this process, we ought to start with regard to those other six or seven or ten buildings? Whatever it is, I don't know how many in order.
The lawyer at the city council meeting said that he was expecting to, you know, look at the other buildings as well, to make sure everything was in order, cause, uh.
Yeah, he, he did say that at the city council meeting, because we believe that, you know, it's this case everywhere, that the deeds show that they were city of Schenectady properties at some point.
Even though they were completely operated as our, our ownership.
Yeah, cause they had, they had no record until we went down this rabbit hole to, to go to close, and.
Yep.
We pulled the deed, and so, uh, we, something we can look at with our attorneys, and see if we can start doing some back.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me we, we might want to make sure that those things are, you know, I don't, I don't know if any, where along the line there would be insurance difficulties or something like that, you know, I.
Only if you go to Salem. Only if we go to Salem.
Exactly, I was like, because we had Elmer, and we had no issues.
Okay, that was, that was what I wanted to ask in connection with that particular one, so.
Yeah, so.
Since it popped up on the, on the front page of the paper.
Okay. So items removed from the consent agenda, resolution nine A, appointing certain employees.
We have to do Elmer.
All in favor?
Of resolution.
Of resolution.
Two, three, zero, one, four.
Two, three.
I'll move it.
Two, three, three, two, what is it?
Two, three, zero, one, zero, four.
I'll move it first, because you don't need the, you, you'll get the vote after you move it, so I'll move it for you.
Okay. And then, so it's second? Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye. No, I'm not opposed, I forgot to say aye, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's alright. Okay. So items again, removed from the consent agenda, resolution nine A, appointing certain employees tenure. I'll accept a motion to approve this motion. Motion? Thank you, Prinsella, second?
Second?
Thank you, Nohalani, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution nine B one, appointing certain employees to a permanent position. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica, second?
Second, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Um, any discussion? There's going to be abstaining, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain?
Abstain.
Yeah. Nohalani abstains. The motion carries. Okay? We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members.
Uh, I just want to, uh, thank again the board for the presentation earlier, and just want to leave with some clarity. I will pursue the plan as proposed, come back to the board with a more up-to-date plan as we start this process, and start to, uh, work with Karen and her team around communication plan, um, for the three hundred million capital. Those other projects are going to continue as we've shared them today, the Mount Pleasant Field. Um, we'll look for a family and community engagement center, maybe we'll look to engage Miracle on Craig Street, see what we can figure out there. I know there's some, they just were extended, my understanding. Um, so I just want to make sure with the board, uh, we will pursue Keane, and figure out if the purchase, the, the, ultimately the voters will have, the community will have to vote on the purchase of that property. So I just want to make sure I'm good with moving forward as planned, and I don't want, no surprises. And then the last thing I just want to say is, we have two people who the board just approved in the audience. Um, uh, James Spooner, uh, and Jason DeGraff, you just going to stand up real quick? They are replacing, um, two vacancies in facilities, yep. Well, Jason DeGraff is our new director of facilities, so he took the place of Mike Berry, who, who retired. And then James Spooner is taking the, uh, basically a new position we created when, uh, Brian Hoffman retired. So, both new gentlemen, we're excited, and, uh, looking forward to what they do with our fields, in our facilities.
Really quick, um, looking into the potential purchase of Keane, I think that it will be helpful for myself, and also just for the general public, if when you come back, and if we do get a number, if we can have a side-by-side comparison of cost-to-benefit ratio of purchasing it and revitalizing it versus continuing to rent it. I think having that in front of us would really paint a clearer picture.
You got it. We'll bring it to either the board, we have a budget work session, uh, coming up with Terry, so we could either plug it into his, so that you guys could have that conversation, uh, but we'll explore both options, cost benefit.
Um, I, I, I know we're, we're moving forward, I, I'm still, I, I'm, I'm looking for, you know, I'm, I'm not feeling, wow, I have no words, when does that happen? Um, I have concerns about the ninth grade academy at Stymens, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to like, more information as you, you dig in and, and talk about what that looks like.
Yeah, so Lynn will be coming back for a redesign update, and that'll be part of that conversation. Uh, more around the program, instructional program, timeline, and again, this is two years out before they would move. Um, but, uh, I do want to say that we did have two high schools at one point, but that's not a avenue that we had proposed, so.
And that's in February, right?
Yeah, February's coming, so Lynn will be back in February with an update on the redesign.
Okay. All good? Okay.
So thank you.
So if there is no further business to discuss, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Jamaica, second?
Second.
Second, Vivian, discussion? All in favor?